Four, three, two, one.
I hear that people are coming in from the waiting room. And I think they are. So, good evening. Welcome to the April 1st City Council meeting. I'm Gina Louise Sharra. I'm the City Council President and I will be presiding this evening. We'll begin, as we do, with public comment. This meeting and all participating on Zoom with us will be audio and video recorded. If you wish to make a public comment, please use the raised hand feature. To raise your hand, you click on Participants in the horizontal menu bar at the bottom of the screen. And a column will open with the participants of the meeting. At the bottom of that column might be a Raise Hand button. If it's not there, check under Reactions. It has moved there for some folks. If you're having trouble raising your hand, please feel free to put something in the chat to me. That's the only purpose that we'll use that chat function and it'll only be used during public comment. I will unmute each raised hand one by one and ask if you'd like to make a comment. When you begin, please state your name and your city or town for the public record. To ensure everyone has an equal opportunity to speak, the council asks that you limit your comments to three minutes. After three minutes, I will ask you to please finish your sentence, not your paragraph or your page, but just your sentence, please. According to council rules, we do not respond during public comment as it is your time to speak. So while your comment should be directed to us, you'll understand when we do not respond to you. You may speak on any topic. It doesn't need to be an item on the agenda. I ask that all but the council turn off your video until called upon, as comments are directed to the council and only the person recognized has the floor. We'll do our best to act quickly if someone is clearly acting in a way that's inappropriate, deploying profanity or slurs, or just playing something outside of what one would expect in council chamber. And I'll remove anyone who needs to be removed from the meeting. If you don't wish to make a comment, we ask you to watch on Channel 15 or by streaming on Northampton Open Media's various platforms, YouTube or others. The recording for this meeting will be available at Northampton Open Media's Government Video Archive Channel on YouTube, and I thank them as always for that public service. I'll remind people, we're always happy to get comments by email, which are equally part of the public record. So please email us at citycouncil@northamptonma.gov. And first up is Jackie Balance.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy. Video, video, okay. Oh, this is so hard.
You got it.
Thank you. Jackie Balance from Florence. I'm here tonight to support a City Council Declaration of a Climate Emergency for the second time. In August of 2019, I spoke at the first reading of a Green New Deal Resolution sponsored then by Councillors Dwight and Klein. That used the words "global climate emergency" in the first whereas paragraph. Now, it's 19 months later. Where has the emergency gone? We have that plastic span that doesn't go into effect for at least four more years. And we just issued a license for a new gas station on King Street. Do these seem like proper responses to a fossil-fueled emergency? Today, I read in The New Republic about a piece with a catchy title, "Underestimating the Challenges of Avoiding a Ghastly Future." Seventeen scientists, the experts who peer-reviewed the piece, the journal's editors did not consider the word ghastly too sensational to describe the future towards which our Earth is advancing with all the prudence and caution of a runaway locomotive. The article's message was simple. Everything must change. Everything. Tonight's resolution to declare a climate emergency is a chance for the city to shift into emergency mode at last. I think if we had floods or wildfires, the emergency responders would be in charge, not since it's city councillors or city planners. The Energy and Resilience Commission and Urban Forestry are the only places in city government where I've heard consistent and concrete plans for addressing the climate emergency. And y'all know, some of you might know, I've been to a lot of meetings in recent months. If council is serious about emergency-level reactions to the climate situation, the climate chaos, council could start tonight by calling forth a high-priority item from the Resilience and Regeneration Plan. I want to suggest an amendment to this declaration, an amendment to suspend, just briefly, all city building permits until the new Resilience and Regeneration Point System for Site Plan Approvals is in place. This could conceivably be done in a matter of weeks, because we're in a real emergency, after all, and shift gears. Call emergency meetings. Let energy and sustainability do some heavy lifting they have prepared. Someone at a recent neighborhood Zoom meeting said that gentrification is like a runaway locomotive. There's that image again. You can't stop it. You'd be lucky if you can steer it. Pausing to implement the Resilience and Regeneration Point System for Site Plan Review could be the precise linchpin we need to control the locomotive that's tearing neighborhoods up. It's a win-win. Council, declare a climate emergency, and then do something about it right away. It's within your purview now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Kim W.
So, good evening. My name's Kim Weber and I live in Florence, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I was at the last meeting and I actually lasted till 10 o'clock at night and you folks were still going. I'm so impressed with your stamina and dedication. Thank you for working so hard for the city. Really appreciate it. So, I know that one of the decisions that's going to be coming up is municipal broadband, citywide broadband. And I took the survey for that and I hope a lot of people did. And I hope that you will consider this, even if the results of the survey don't indicate that huge numbers of people are going to switch from Comcast to municipal broadband. There are a couple reasons that we really might want to consider broadband. One is it's more secure. Two, it is almost 10 times more energy efficient than wireless. And if we're looking at climate issues, if we want to spend all our energy sending wireless signals through the city, that is not efficient. It's not a good use of energy. Broadband is much better. And we know that wireless emits radio frequency microwave radiation. And all of you council members should have gotten notes from your constituents now with some links to look at information on this issue. Specifically, the state of New Hampshire did a very long-term study of the radio frequency microwave radiation with cell phones and cell towers. And if you haven't taken a look at that, please take a look at the science. It's really clear that there are effects from this. I also understand that the city cannot take into account environmental and health effects, even though there are some. But you can take into account the city property values and protecting our city. The FCC did not prevent city council from protecting our properties. So if we want cell antennas outside our homes, that is going to decrease those property values. Real estate appraisal studies have proven that. We don't need to do that. We can use citywide municipal broadband. We don't need to have wireless everywhere throughout the city. We don't need to have these things in front of our homes. So I hope you will, please take a look at the letters that you got and consider that we really, really need this broadband. It'll be good for energy efficiency. It'll be good for the environment. It'll be good for property values and health of the citizens. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Marty's iPhone.
Hello. This is Marty Nathan. I live at 25, 24, I didn't even notice, Massasoia Street in Northampton. And thank you for allowing me to speak. I wanted to do two things very shortly. First of all, support the passage, or read passages, Jackie has pointed out, the resolution to declare a climate emergency and to act on it. And secondly, I wanted to again thank the Northampton Police Review Commission for all their hard work and in great hopes that the City Council will implement their findings and their recommendations. That's it.
Thank you. Next is Pennington Geis.
Hi. I'm here to give some thank yous, first of all, to Mayor Narcoitz and then to DPW Director LaScalia for respecting and supporting the need to repair the Hotel Bridge in Leeds. You know, you've received a note from me and probably from some other residents. So I also want to thank all of you for supporting it. You'll hear more reasons later. I won't take up any more of your endless time in this meeting. Thank you so much to all of you.
Thank you. Next is Denise Lello.
Hi, my name is Denise Lello. I live at 35 Woodlawn Avenue in Northampton. And I'm also here representing Mothers Out Front, a climate activism organization. I want to thank Councillors Foster, Mayori and Jarrett for submitting the resolution declaring a climate emergency. I support the resolution and I hope that its words are followed by action. And specifically, taking action to ensure that Northampton adopts a net-zero-stretch building code as soon as they are able, that seniors and other low-income residents are prioritized as health and financial beneficiaries as we move forward towards a sustainable future. And finally, I think it's important to provide support to the Northampton Office of Sustainability, that would be Chris Mason, so that he can continue to provide excellent advice during these transitions to a clean energy future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Harrison Bloom.
Yes, good evening and I hope you're all doing well. I live in Ward 2. I want to also speak to the resolution declaring a climate emergency and thank Councillors Foster, Mayori and Jarrett and all the councillors. What amazing work you do on top of everything else in your life. So this resolution, quite simply, it names the global context of a climate emergency. It's what we already know and it situates Northampton within it. It builds on our Sustainable Comprehensive Plan as well as Climate Resilience and Regeneration Plan. So it builds, I think it also just more so gives more ground, gives ground for future expanding of our climate change mitigation policies and actions. And last, I'll just say that with over 400 cities worldwide with such a resolution and over 20 cities and towns in our own state having passed resolutions, it's really a way for us to say, we agree and we are with you. This is us. It is up for us to make a livable planet in the future. Thanks and have a good evening.
Thank you. Next up is Mimi Rogers.
Hello, Mimi Rogers. I live on Ward 6. I have been a resident of Northampton for 20 years, pay taxes, and I want to speak in favor of the Police Commission Review's findings. I am very much in favor of them creating a new department. I know that was one of the questions people had. Should we be creating a department? I think the answer to that is yes. Again, as a taxpayer, I'm absolutely in favor of that. I know that the city can change and shift at different times. We used to have a Board of Public Works. The charter came in and changed that department, shifted those priorities, moved things around. So I think that the city is used to kind of figuring stuff out rather than shifting down, or maybe we shifting down what the police department does, we'll be building up another department. So it can be done. It's nothing to be concerned about. I'm very much in favor of that. I also am very much in favor of the climate component that people are talking about tonight. I read Marty Nathan's article in the paper today. I want to thank her for that work. I also want to thank all the city councillors. You folks have been working very late hours with all of these meetings with public comments going on so long. So I'm pretty much end my comments now, but I just want to say thank you to all of you and thank you especially to the people who served on the Police Review Commission. That was also really hard work that was not paid and so I really want to thank them. So, thank you.
Next is Robert.
All right. Hi, everyone. I am Robert Eastman. I live in Ward 3 in Northampton. I wanted to just echo support for the Climate Emergency Resolution and pretty much everything everyone else has said tonight. I also want to thank you for your supportive comments and thoughtful questions posed to the Policing Review Commission last Tuesday and for your commitment to reimagining public safety in Northampton going forward. And I think that two financial orders that are on tonight's City Council agenda present an opportunity for you to begin this work swiftly and with the urgency demanded by those who have been most harmed by policing. On Tuesday, the co-chair of the commission, Cynthia Supois, said the recommended changes in the final report all need to happen now, right now. And so here are two opportunities to think about. The first is an order to appropriate free cash in the amount of $400,000 to the animal control facility. I was surprised to learn during PRC meetings that the Northampton Police Department spends about 8.6% of their time responding to animal calls, which is a pretty significant portion of their time. I was also surprised to learn that they've only been under the umbrella of the Police Department for a few years, since 2015. As we've heard throughout several public hearings, many people, particularly Black, Indigenous, and people of color, do not feel safe calling the police. And so I urge you to move the work of animal control out of the Police Department and funding it so that a non-police animal control response is available 24/7. This ensures safety for all residents, including the ones who do not feel safe calling the police by providing an essential city service with a non-police response. I hope that you'll consider bringing this up tonight, in tonight's discussion, sorry, discussion, and approving it, approving it under the condition, or possibly an amendment, that there's a plan to move animal control out of the Police Department. Secondly, I wanted to speak on the order to appropriate marijuana community impact fees in the amount of $2.6 million to different projects. I'm excited to see revenue generated from the impact fees, being used to work on projects to improve our city. But I wonder how we might hold ourselves accountable to the Black and Brown communities who have disproportionately been impacted by decades of racist and militant drug policy. I urge you to put forth the idea that an advisory board composed of Black and Brown residents, or those who have experienced criminalization or incarceration, be created to oversee and decide how revenue from marijuana-related businesses is spent in Northampton. And while I understand that the impact fee is generally put towards items such as road improvements to alleviate the effects of increased traffic that a new business might bring, I think we need to take a deeper look at the impacts on our computer, community that are not so visible. I did email these comments, so it goes into more detail, but thank you.
Next is Jose Adostra.
Hello. I think I started showing up to these, I live in Northampton. I think I started showing up to these meetings around last year after George Floyd was lynched on the street. And I started interacting with the police in Northampton more because I kind of, I drew a line at what I would tolerate and what I wouldn't, regardless of what kind of interaction that would lead to. So that's when I really learned about how, you know, they were operating and what they were really providing to people, especially right when COVID started. I think that it's really important to heed Cynthia's statement that it needs to happen right now. It needed to happen last year, five years ago, you know, 10 years ago. That's the real problem. That's why, that's why she said that it needs to happen now. Because it needed to happen a while ago. And I want to speak to some of the non-effective things that came out of the review, which is investing more money in a complaint process. That's not going to help at all. That's a complete waste of money. Every dollar spent on the Police Department can be better spent somewhere else. We don't need to invest in them anymore. We need to take money away from them. I think that you could do well before some of you leave your positions and, you know, resign or retire, to reach out to some of us who have been antagonizing you for the last year to try to set up some of these departments. You know, a lot of us would do, help, try to, try to help you coordinate for, you know, some of us volunteer. I think it would be good if you did that as soon as possible, because the sooner that some, because we have intimate relationships with the people that need help, the people that are on the street. So I think that we need to figure out how to integrate that. And it needs to be as soon as possible, like Cynthia said. And that will really, you know, it hasn't really improved in the past year. I haven't, you know, people are still staying in the street and services are barely being provided and mutual aid isn't kind of being able to put a Band-Aid on a wound. So we need to figure out something else. And otherwise, I really do support the majority of the Police Commission Review's recommendation. And I hope that we can move with, move quicker than, you know, than six meetings from now. Do something quick. Get in touch with people quickly. We've been coming for a long time. You know how to get in touch with us. Take care.
Next is Ashwin Ravi Kumar.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ashwin Ravi Kumar and I'm an Assistant Professor of Environmental Policy at Amherst College. I live in Amherst but come to Northampton a lot and I've followed this process with great interest. So first of all, I want to congratulate the Policing Review Commission on their tremendous work. From creating a Department of Community Care on a two-year timeline while funding it, to all kinds of great details about what alternatives to policing look like for people who use drugs, for unhoused people, for people undergoing mental health crises. There is just so much good stuff in this report that sets such a wonderful foundation for building capacity outside of the police to address issues and needs that people in our community have. It also fundamentally, at its core, calls to reduce the size, scope, and power of the police, which is exactly what the Movement for Black Lives is calling for nationally and what we need to do in order to create space for these alternatives to grow and flourish. This was a document that came out through a rigorous process of consensus and the overwhelming majority of the commissioners from conversations and attending and paying close attention to the meetings were on board with. So all of that is great. I would also like to echo what Jose pointed out about some of the recommendations being a little off that mark. There are some things in the report that do not reduce the size, scope, and power of policing. For example, spending money on more training and spending money on more of a robust complaint process, right? So as a person of color myself, if I'm going through crisis, I don't want to call a cop that has been through an anti-racism training and I don't want to call a cop, securing the knowledge that if he does something racist to me, I'll be able to complain about it more effectively later. I want to call someone who's not a cop at all, right? So all of the recommendations that are pursuant to that objective represent the shortest path to reducing racism in policing in Northampton. All right? So the final thing I'll say is I'm really excited about the Climate Emergency Resolution and I see it as intimately linked to the recommendations of the Policing Review Commission. So I sit on the Energy and Climate Action Committee in Amherst. And one of the things that we've seen over and over again, or had pointed out to us by organizers and especially youth climate activists over and over again, is that Amherst has one sustainability coordinator and 36 cops. Now, as Martin Luther King said, to paraphrase him, "A budget is not just an allocation of resources, but a moral document that tells you what a community's priorities are and perhaps even more importantly, who it centers in decision-making," right? So I would encourage you all to think about, as you move hopefully to declare a climate emergency through resolution, what would a budget allocation that represents these moral priorities and centers the people that ought to be centered in Northampton in decision-making, what would that budget look like? I know that Mayor Narcoitz has the first go and the ball is in his court to take a cut at that. And I hope that the council will push and work with and collaborate with the mayor to make that budget reflect those priorities as much as possible. Thank you so much.
Next is Lemmy.
Hi, I'm Lemmy. I live in Ward 1. I just wanted to make a comment following the Police Review Commission. Thank you, everyone who like worked really hard on that and, you know, echoing what others said. I think that, you know, alternatives and there's so many good things in there and a new department. And I think the Department of Community Care and like another department in general, you know, we saw the Northampton City Government really struggle with maintaining relationships with like Black women on the commission and women of color. And I just wanted to name that like part of the new department, I think, could be like fostering relationships with marginalized people in the city. And like, I feel like there's been a refrain throughout, like me starting to come to city council meetings that it's really hard to engage people. People don't care about city politics, but like if the city takes care of people, like people will care about the city. And so I think that founding a Department of Community Care also increases accountability to marginalized communities. And so I think that founding a department of community care also increases accountability to marginalized communities and. Can help, you know, foster accountability throughout the city. And so, um, it's really hard to see. People rest on laurels of like not being able to access marginalized communities when we're not doing anything to help them. And so I think that we could build that accountability if we like make a commitment through founding a new department. Um, and funding alternatives like Ashwin talked about. So I just wanted to name that and, and just like really think that on like even the topics that Robert mentioned, like that are being discussed tonight. We would have more accountability for those topics if we had another department that served marginalized communities. And because we don't have departments that serve marginalized communities and we're spending such a huge amount of money on policing. We're not, we don't have those accountability relationships, right? And I think that brings me to sort of some of my concerns about some of the things that were talked about on Tuesday's meetings. About, um, some of the reforms and, and this idea that we can just like improve the police policing, uh, police, the police department's relationship with the community and things will get better. But unfortunately, like, that's never gonna work because just improving the relationship with the community, there's still a population that is gonna be policed and gonna be marginalized by that. Even if you increase slightly, the more, like slightly more people trust the police and will call the police, there's still people who are being. Called on and those people are going to be put in jail. And like, we talk about how there hasn't been a George Floyd type murder here yet. However, like every person put in jail right now is like an increase of COVID exposure, which is an incre- like, which is kind of a death sentence for some people. So I would just like to question whether or not like, like what do we define as like a George Floyd style murder? Because incarceration lowers like life expectancies. There's like so many things about the incarceration system. And the policing system that kills people anyway, regardless of whether it's like a big public thing. So. I just want to name that, like, improving these relationships and, and all the reforms that are talked about is, um. Like, often predicated on the idea that, you know, the reforms that increase the police budget, like, you know, improving complaint processes are just predicated on the idea that. Improving relationships.
Lemmy, that's time.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you all hear me? Give me nods. Yeah, okay. Uh, next up is Ry.
Hello. I'm feeling a lovely sense of unity and agreement with everyone in the North Hampton community right now. I completely support the motion to declare a climate emergency. I agree with everything everyone has said about that. And I completely support the creation of a new department of community care, which is accountable to the people it serves. And designed by and accountable to the people most impacted by the NPD. I want to urge Mayor Narcoitz and all the city councilors to support and work towards the creation of this department of community care this year. Right away. And I know it will be difficult, but it is an urgent need and desire of our community. I'd like to further encourage you to use the money set aside from the police budget last year to fund this new department. Our community needs alternative responses, alternatives to policing immediately. So we can begin reducing the footprint of the NPD immediately and just begin reducing vectors of harm to people in our community. I was talking to a friend last night, um, about this. And, and he said, sure, we haven't had, uh, a George Floyd style murder lynching in our community yet, but, but why wait? And, you know, I don't want to live in a community where there is a potential that something like that could happen to, you know, a loved one of mine. Doesn't matter how small, and I don't want to live in a community where somebody I love is going to be afraid of that happening to them. That's horrible. And so I want you all to create this new department of community care, create these alternatives to policing just as soon as possible. So we can begin reducing the footprint of NPD as soon as possible, begin reducing the danger and the fear. For our community members and make a better community that is where we have safety for everyone at the expense of no one. Um, thank you for the time.
Before you leave, can you please state your name and city or town?
Ah, yes. Uh, sorry about that. My name is Ry Buckley and I live in North Hampton, Ward Three.
Thank you. Okay, next is Amy Olson.
Hi, um, my name is Amy Olson. I live in North Hampton, also Ward Three. I want to echo what everyone's been saying pretty much, um, supporting an allocation of funds from the police. Cut, budget cuts from last year and then also future budget cuts of 50% or more. To reallocate that to the community and creating a department of community care that is truly accountable to people harmed by policing. Um, and something I've noticed, um, from attending not all, but. A fe- a good number of, uh, city council meetings since the beginning of last summer. Is that a lot of these demands have stayed the same. A lot of people have been saying over and over that reform for policing doesn't work. I haven't even been to every meeting and I'm still hearing the same things. So I imagine that you all on city council have heard this a lot. And I think that in the future, we can avoid city council meetings that go until 2:00 AM. If we listen to the demands that have been made over and over for abolition of the police. And I encourage North Hampton to continue, um, in its history and its incredible abolitionist history by working toward. Abolishing the police and defunding the police completely. Because, um, when there are police, there is always the possibility of a George Floyd style murder. And even if there's not, every single act of violence by policing increases people's trauma and people's. Possibility for an early death, pe- uh, just people's livelihood, and it's not okay. So yeah, just in support of the demands for community, Department of Community Care, um, cutting the police budget and reallocating those funds. Thank you.
Okay, Jonathan Volk is next.
Hi, uh, I'm Jonathan Volk in Ward Two. I've been a resident of North Hampton for the last 10 years. So I wanted to add to the support for the recommendation delivered by the North Hampton Policing Commission Review Report. I also wanted to respond to a couple of things that came up in the report. And that came up in its presentation on Tuesday. In particular, comments from Namdi Poll, one of the commissioners, uh, and Mayor Narcoitz. So in the report and in Tuesday's meeting, Namdi Poll claimed that limiting policing staff to respond solely to violent calls. Would lead to a higher presence of what he called military-oriented officers who, by his logic, would swoop into North Hampton to enact their war mongering fantasies. So I really want to know, are we supposed to believe that a community like North Hampton prioritizing de-escalation? Peer-led and non-coercive responses would become a pilgrimage site for the most violent police? Poll's reasoning falls back on the tired language of policy that does nothing to materially improve the lives of our communities most vulnerable. And in the commission report, he actually writes that there needs to be, quote, "more healing." From between the NPD and the members of the community that do not trust them, end quote. What exactly constitutes this healing that he's talking about is left unsaid, as it usually is. So turning to tired platitudes that speak to our souls is a sound tactic to distract from the practical matter of moving money away. From a violent institution like the NPD and into one like the Department of Community Care founded on ideas of harm reduction. So indeed, the sort of tired self-help language that Poll uses stands out in some of the testimonials that appear in the commission report. Uh, other people speaking about the process being personally rewarding and that writing the report encompassed journeys of incredible growth. So framing police reform as a personal journey, um, I think is a troubling matter. And I don't think that we should allow ourselves to be comfortable with this kind of framing. Uh, at Tuesday's meeting, Mayor Narcoitz made a troubling suggestion that the report was actually recommending. The hiring of more police to fulfill staffing needs. Uh, so the policing review commission member Javier Luengo Garrido stepped in to correct the mayor's troubling suggestions, saying unequivocally. That the commission made no such recommendation. But that the mayor and Chief Casper are already spinning the findings of the commission as a way to invest more in the NPD is troubling, to say the least. The completion of the report represents an inflection point for our community, which has long prided itself as a bastion for progressive humane politics. So I want to call on the mayor and city councilors to move immediately to create a department of community care. To divest from the NPD and invest in our community. Last year's 10% cut to the NPD budget can be just the beginning. Let us work tirelessly and uncomfortably to ask for more and to ask for all. Thank you.
Deborah.
Hi, uh, my name is Deborah Berkovitz. I live in Bay State Village. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your service. So I'm here to support the climate emergency resolution. And to say that part of the reason why I'm so deeply opposed to the development that is occurring in Bay State Village by John Hansel of New Way Homes is because. Is because of the climate crisis. And I would urge the city council, as you're looking at policies and resolutions, to really think about consistency across city departments and across initiatives. And I want to give a couple of examples. So I know that the DPW person came and, and was talking about how to plan. For, you know, basically for future climate crisis in North Hampton. And two houses on one block in, on Warner Street, which already has a huge stormwater problem, have become seven. With John Hansel's development. And three houses between Warner Street and Liberty Street are becoming 10. But the current policies mean that these are only being looked at one at a time. And so the, the impact on the stormwater system as our city's getting more and more rain, isn't being planned for. So we're looking only at the development of single houses, um, in 2021 and not what those actually 10 houses are going to mean. In, in 2040 or even in 2031, already we, we, uh, you know, we can't handle the water on this block. And I'd also like to make a correction to something that Carolyn Mish said last in the, during the two-family zoning, which is a meeting, which is that she said that these houses. That New Way has, is taking down, needed to be taken down. And I can say unequivocally that that's untrue. Having, having been in them and, um, and with full transparency, having made an offer on two of them to, uh, for my own residence. So it's not true. And, um, the stretch code, which is a great thing that North Hampton has adopted to try to address climate resiliency. There wouldn't be a payback in thousands of years from tearing down wood frame houses. And putting up vinyl-sided, vinyl-windowed, fossil-fuel-based houses with no potential for solar gain. And in North Carolina, when I lived there 20-some years ago. And was part of, um, an organization called Preservation North Carolina, our bumper sticker was "Preservation is the Ultimate in Recycling." And the, the gain from the stretch code, which is very important, and you know, the, the two inches of cellulose insulation that come are great. You can put tremendous cellulose insulation and you can restore windows and put storm windows on older houses and have great efficiency. And when I look at the 18-wheelers coming up and down the street that I live on now, as these next three houses are being built. The, the plastic wrap around the materials that's going to be in our, in the landfills for the next 10,000 years. The vinyl siding, the vinyl windows, which maybe if we're lucky, have a 15 or 20-year lifespan and end up in the, for the next many thousands of years. Sounds like maybe that's my time. Thank you. And, and the debris, the shipping that comes with demolishing houses. Um, and so I would really encourage to not be looking at all of these policies separately, but to understand this development as actively contributing to the climate crisis that we're undergoing. Thank you.
Next is Ya Ping.
Hi, um, my name is Ya Ping. I live in Turner's Falls and I spend a lot of time in North Hampton. I wanted to share some of my observations as someone who watched many, many hours of the policing review commissions, meetings and subcommittee meetings. I, I maybe watched at least more than half, maybe more than three-quarters of them. So as someone who watched many hours of, of their meetings, I wanted to share that there was overwhelming consensus. On the core recommendations in the report from almost all of the people of color in the commission. The, the things that people were in agreement about were the creation of a new department of community care. That would be directly accountable in meaningful ways to people who have been harmed by policing. The recommendations to reduce the footprint of police and the urgent timeline. And so, um, I want to name who those people were. It was Josie Javier Luango from the ACLU of Massachusetts. Dr. Booker Bush, Elizabeth Barahas Roman, and Dan Kennedy. They all strongly, strongly advocated for, again, the new department, the accountability to people harmed by policing and state violence, and urgent timeline. Which would begin immediately and complete many of these recommendations within two years to reduce the footprint of policing. And the two recommendations that I observed did not have consensus from most of the people of color on the commission. Were the recommendations for improving the complaint process and the implementation of a strategic plan by the North Hampton Police. I want to echo again that those two recommendations are in stark. They're in opposition to what the uprising last summer in defense of black lives and for what the movement for black lives has been calling for. These kinds of recommendations, which actually increase the footprint of policing, have also been proven to be ineffective, um, throughout history over the last 150 years. And I wanted to share an illustration of a close-up of how that looks. So in Brattleboro, Brattleboro's Community Safety Task Force. Actually recommended disbanding the Brattleboro, um, Community Oversight Board called the Citizens Police Communications Committee. They found it to be ineffective, draining to community members and a waste of resources. And I want to read some excerpts from their report. "In reviewing two years of committee meeting minutes, there was no evidence of any disagreement or challenge to the police department's findings or responses to any complaint. Even though there were themes of complaints related to discrimination based on race, class, and housing status. Black and non-black people of color respondents disproportionately named that attempts at accountability for department actions felt fruitless. And left those community members feeling unsafe around police and unable to safely utilize police for support when unsafe or in need." And I, I can send, there's, without the bell, I'll send the details. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nikhil Baskin.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, councilors, as always, for everything that you do. And thank you to the policing review commission, as well as others, and said for really vast, vast, and thoughtful and deep work that they have done over the past several months. I am in agreement with much of what everyone else has said tonight. And I just wanted to speak, um, both in support of the recommendations of the commission, particularly. The Department of Community Care and needs assessment and data analysis going alongside that, but not holding. The creation of the department up to do those things first. This was well articulated in Tuesday's meeting. I also wanted to speak in support of all five resolutions tonight. But I'm sort of specifically interested in speaking about the resolution to review the rules and committees of the council. Which I think is a really useful thing right now. And I think I've, having come to most, but not all, um, of the, the council meetings in this past year. And growing a lot of appreciation for the work that all of you are doing. I'm continually struck by the lack of opportunity for dialogue, um, with citizens in council. I think we get to come and talk at you for three minutes each, and then you don't get to respond to it, and then the meeting happens. And I, it feels like a very unsatisfying model of engagement to me. And so I would be really curious if this. Consideration of the rules of council could think about ways that citizens could engage in council meetings that are different. Obviously, the meetings are already really long and adding more voices might make things longer. And so I think it would be important to think carefully about how to implement that in a way that doesn't. Continue to have the meetings go, go as long as they have been or go even longer. But I think that I just really wish we could talk to each other and respond to each other in the context of the meeting, rather than all of that having to happen. Outside of the meeting and individual communications that are careful not to break open meeting law. I'd like to talk with all of you in an open meeting. And I, I would love for there to be more of a way that that could happen within the context of council. And I'm really interested in that, seeing structural changes that might allow that. And just to tap the expertise of the community, because people say. And just to tap the expertise of the community, because people say things in comment, they have such clear, deep knowledge on these issues. It was fascinating hearing what I'm sorry, I've forgotten the name, but the person who was just speaking about the housing development was citing so many really key features. There was clearly like deep research and lived experience. And I would love to see that in conversation with the council, rather than just in these little moments before the meeting proper even begins. So that was just my thought for today. Thank you all so much.
Next, Emily Dropkin.
My name is Emily Dropkin. I live in Turner's Falls, but I work in North Hampton. And I want to talk tonight, I want to first thank everyone who's spoken about the police. I appreciate everything that you've committed to that work. I'm here to talk about the climate declaration. One of the sort of foundational demands of Extinction Rebellion across the world is this idea that first we have to tell the truth about how dire the situation that we're facing is. And then, once we've told the truth, we have this space for action. And I really appreciated hearing all the different ways people tonight have talked about the kinds of action we can take once we accept the situation that we're facing and once we acknowledge it together, especially in light of the federal government we've dealt with for the last four years and the amount of denial that has prevented us from taking really necessary and urgent action. I just want to read a couple of sentences from the proposed resolution to have them in this space. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of North Hampton affirms that human activity caused the climate crisis and that fossil fuels are the primary cause. Be it further resolved that the City Council of North Hampton hereby declares that a climate emergency threatens our state, city, state and nation as well as humanity broadly. And that a mobilization to meet this challenge is both a moral imperative and an unprecedented opportunity to stabilize the climate, remedy environmental harms, create clean energy jobs and improve human lives. I really appreciate everyone's support tonight for that and for the rest of what's in there. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last one that I see. I'm just going to do a quick check. Okay, no further comments. We will convene the meeting. Laura, will you please take the role?
Counselor Dwight.
Here.
Counselor Foster.
Here.
Counselor Jarrett.
Here.
Counselor Labarge.
Here.
Counselor Mayori.
Here.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
Counselor Quinlan.
Here.
Counselor Shara.
Here.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Excellent. Thank you. First up on our agenda is an announcement of a public hearing. This is 21.200 National Grid Verizon Poll Petition for Warner Street. Petition number 30293688. Per Mass General Law, Chapter 166, Section 22, the North Hampton City Council will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 15th, 2021 at 7:05 PM on National Grid Verizon New England's petition to install one jointly owned pole on Warner Street to serve two new homes. Instructions for accessing the hearing may be found on the April 15th, 2021 City Council Agenda to be posted on the city's website at northhamptonma.gov 48 hours prior to the meeting. The City Council will hear all persons who wish to be heard thereon at that meeting. Next up, do we have announcements from committee chairs for updates? Counselor Dwight.
Hello. Legislative matters, we will have our regularly scheduled meeting, but there's also you, you'll see coming up sometime now, bit of a, bit of ways into the agenda. A likely referral to legislative matters probably for the purposes of another joint hearing, but it was zoning. And it looks like we have a couple of date options that are not in this month. Laura, what, can you, do you have handy what we, oh, here we go. I think I have it. There's a possibility of May 13th. Or the 10th, is that possible too?
Yes.
Right. And then or the 27th. And I don't know, and, and later, when we come up to that agenda item, I will ask the consensus of the committee members what their preference is for that meeting. This is, and yeah, thanks. That, that covers what I need to say.
Any other committee chairs? How about let's move into one minute announcements? Counselor Jarrett and Counselor Nash.
Great. I wanted to just share a few events that are coming up in Ward Five. Actually, one just happened. The Children's Advocacy Center held a luminary event today, actually throughout Hampshire County, and they had over 2,000 lights to represent each of the children who are survivors of abuse and who have come through the CAC House since 2006. And their website is cachamshire.org. Then on April 8th, at 7 o'clock, the David Ruggles Center is holding an online event, The Fight for Equality in Florence, the North Hampton Association, David Ruggles and Their Legacy Today. So we'll learn about that association. And the radical, which was a radical abolitionist utopian community. And we'll hear about how we can live those ideals today. And so that's at davidrugglescenter.org. And lastly, on Saturday, April 10th, at 10 AM on the Florence Civic Center lawn, the League of Women Voters of the North Hampton area will have a grand opening of the She Shapes History exhibit, which will run April 3rd to early May, be in several locations in downtown Florence, and it will celebrate the suffragists and the unsung heroes who fought for women's right to vote. And it also showcases the continuing battle against voter suppression. And that's at l w v northamptonarea.org. Thanks.
Counselor Nash.
Thank you. I just want to make people aware that the walking school bus to Bridge Street School will start operating at full capacity on, starting next week with schools opening up. We are going to have, you know, our full routes with, with two drivers walking the bus. So if, you know, if it's getting the word out to the, to the Bridge Street community that you can hop on the bus, it'll be there. And also, we continue to look for volunteers. If, if you want to just contact the, the principal's office, it's, it's pretty simple process. You go through VINS and do a VINS application, a Corey check, and then you don't even need a driver's license to drive this bus. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. We love the walking school bus. Counselor Dwight.
On the 14th of April, North Hampton residents will have an opportunity to weigh in on the continuing discussion about the redesign of downtown. This is, this currently, this conversation has been enthusiastically engaged by, but there's a number of sectors that have not been represented and have not spoken to the points that we find most critical and in our, in our, in at least in every conversation we have here on the council floor and then beyond. So I encourage people to show up. There'll be, if, if you want more information about it, it's, it's at 6 PM on Wednesday, April 14th. If you go to northhamptonma.gov and go to Planning and Sustainability, you'll see a link there for to participate. And this is a once, literally a once in a lifetime, once more, once in a generation. This is a redesign that prefigures what the landscape, what the public commons will be for 100 years hence. And there's enough, there's a significant amount of money that the Mass DOT is prepared to commit, to commit to this. But we have to actually, we have to do the hard part of trying to generate consensus among community members. People live here, people who congregate here. What it is we want and what, what North Hampton should be for all of us. So please, by all means, please attend.
Any other one minute announcements, recommendations? Okay, Mayor Narcoitz, I believe you have communications for us.
Yes, I do. Just a couple of quick items I wanted to, to, to just speak about. I, I sent out a press release like moments before the council meeting, but I, I just wanted to, to briefly speak to it. Today, we, oh, the governor held a big event yesterday, I believe, in the eastern part of the state and announced a series of housing choice grants around the Commonwealth. And the city was awarded a $250,000 Housing Choice Grant, which we are going to use to create affordable housing on two former North Hampton State Hospital parcels. Actually, the council, not this council, or actually maybe the previous council even actually passed a home rule petition back in 2016. It's been a long, strange trip to get that law passed. It was essentially a law that was amending the original state hospital disposition back in 1994. These two parcels, one on Laurel Street, one on Burt's Pit Road, had originally been given to the Housing Authority for redevelopment. And, and with a, with a deadline to do that, they were unable to do it. These parcels were just sort of sitting there rotting away. And so we petitioned the legislature and the council, you know, adopted the home rule petition to basically transfer them to the state, to the city and allow us to ensure that they could be actually developed for affordable housing. So it took us several tries in the legislature. And so finally, the governor did sign into law the end of the session and the transfer has finally taken place to the city. And these grants, together with CDBG funding, are going to help us with some of the infrastructure that's going to be needed to facilitate this. The Burt's Pit Parcels will actually be awarded to, sorry, to Habitat for Humanity, Pioneer Valley Habitat for Humanity, who will be developing some homes. And then Valley CDC will be developing housing on the Laurel Street Parcels as well. So it took us a while. But we, we've made some strides and obviously this grant is going to be significant in helping create what we hope will be between the two parcels, about 25 units of new affordable housing stock in the city. So grateful to those two organizations for working with us and grateful to Planning and Sustainability. And obviously grateful to our two legislators, Senator Commerford and Representative Sabadosa for finally getting that bill over the finish line to the governor's desk. And then the other item, I, I just wanted to sort of reflect on or just mention for those who didn't know that this morning, there was a, a small but very festive ceremony at the Universe, Unitarian Universalist Society of North Hampton in Florence, right next to City Hall. And our neighbor, our friend and neighbor, I often refer to her as I chat with her over the years when she's been out on the porch, Arida Kachakar Nova, who's been in Sanctuary at the Universalist Society since April of 2017. No, yeah, it's three years. Unbelievable. She's been there in Sanctuary. Her congregation has been caring for her. The Pioneer Valley Workers Center has been caring for her as she has tried to go through the legal process to avoid deportation back to Russia. And her family has been supported by the congregation and the community at large. And obviously, hundreds of volunteers, including helping her start a business making and selling pierogies, which she pointed out today are available at, you know, River Valley Market and the Farmer's Market and as well as Cornucopia Foods. She's also a good marketing expert as well. But it was just such an amazing ceremony. Lucio Perez, who has just come out of Sanctuary over in Amherst, actually attended the ceremony. It was the first time they had ever met each other in person. They had FaceTime before from their respective churches and sanctuary. But it was just, it was a very moving ceremony. And I think it's just another incredible example of how our community has stood up for its values as a sanctuary city and, and embraced members of our community who are seeking, whether it's asylum or just seeking a pathway to legal citizenship in the United States. So wonderful day. And, and obviously we wish her and her family well. She, her case has been reopened, so there's still a legal legal work to happen. But she's no longer facing arrest and deportation by ICE. So just a really great day for the city. And I just wanted to take note of it tonight.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that reflection. And it's really nice to get lovely, good news. And you, those are two pieces of very good news today. So thank you for that. Okay, we are up to resolutions. First up is 21.207, a resolution decriminalizing controlled substance possession as well as cultivation and distribution of psychedelic plants. This is in second reading.
I move to approve.
Second.
Are you guys hearing that?
I seconded.
Oh, I got that. Okay. Any discussion?
Counselor Dwight.
I think Counselor Mayori had her hand up to speak.
Sorry, did you?
Okay, I'm having trouble hearing because there was some feedback. I just wanted to. Is that me?
I know, it's echoing.
How, I don't know how to, I don't have any phones around me. Anyway.
Counselor Mayor, you're frozen.
All right. I'm frozen.
There you go. Try now.
I, I'm not sure where we are in the prime.
Counselor Mayor, it's not going well. I turned off your video.
Okay. Huh? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep. I'm not sure where we are. I wanted to thank Bay Stateers. You can't hear me?
Well, you're going in and out. Let's.
I just wanted to thank Bay Stateers for natural medicine more time. Thank you. I'll stop talking.
You did it. We heard that. Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Oh, you're muted.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori. Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Epstein.
Okay, that passes in second reading. I'm going to give something to try. I'm going to mute all and then unmute and see if that maybe solves whatever is going on. Okay? Okay. We'll see as you unmute whether that solves that feedback problem. Next up, we have 21.208, a resolution to adopt the Capital Improvement Program for FY 2022 to FY 2026 submitted to City Council on February 24th, 2021. This is on second reading.
Move to approve.
Motion made by Counselor Dwight. Any discussion on second reading? Seeing none. Counselor Mayor, I can't see you very well. So if you have signed, raise your hand. Although, okay.
Yeah, I can't, can you hear me at least? No.
Yeah.
It's okay. Okay, great. I can't actually see anyone either.
Counselor Foster.
Thanks. I actually just had a question that I'm sure any other councillor or the mayor could answer. I was trying to remember the $600,000 for the radios. I, I couldn't remember what that was for, and I'm hoping somebody does.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah.
Sure. So actually, $6 million?
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Extra zero there. Yeah, that's an, that's a, a multi-year project that we've been working on. Our, our communication system across all of our departments, from dispatch to from dispatch to fire rescue, to police, to DPW, to schools. We use, currently use a hodgepodge of different channels, different towers. And so we've been doing a multi-year study. It was actually funded in a previous capital plan to basically try to modernize that equipment and to try to deal with some of the really bad gaps that we have in the current configuration of our communication network, particularly in some of our schools, where some parents may, like, I remember there's no cell service at JFK sometimes or in some other buildings. And so we have similar challenges there. So this was a multi-year study where we went to look at if we're going to buy new radios, if we want to do something that is sort of citywide and that all departments will be able to communicate on the same type of equipment and that we have the proper frequency. So it's a, it's a pretty significant project. It's, it's, there's a borrowing authorization for the full amount, but we're going to be doing it in a two-year process. So we won't actually go out to borrow for the full amount in the first year. It would be done over two years. So that's the, that's the backstory. And there's more detail in the capital plan itself. There's a, there's a project description.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Darn it.
You're muted, Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor, Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe. And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Okay, Laura. I mean, there you go. I don't know what's going on. Counselor Jarrett.
I think it might be Bill, and I wonder if he put on some headphones, that that might solve the problem.
Let's see, let's, I'm gonna disconnect these.
That would be great if we figured this out. Perhaps. So, yeah, I think so. They can't hear you, though.
Now there's an echo from the president.
Is it still, is it still there?
Um, no.
That's good.
It was coming from my earbuds.
Maybe. All right. Let's move on and see what goes on. Um, next is 21.209, a resolution expressing gratitude to North Hampton Health Department first responders and senior staff and volunteers for efforts to vaccinate our community. This is on second reading.
Move approval, please.
Motion made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Labarge. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
And Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Okay, that passes on second reading. On first reading, we have 21.231, a resolution declaring a climate emergency. And...
Move approval, please.
Second.
What is it made and seconded? I'm gonna read it. Um, and then we'll discuss it. So this is in the City Council on April 1st, 2021. Upon the recommendation of Council Karen Foster, Counselor Rachel Mayori, and Counselor Alex Jarrett, declaring a climate emergency. Whereas, in a world facing the extreme challenges of rapid climate change, North Hampton residents understand the importance of protecting the earth and its inhabitants, can envision a better, sustainable future, and can create and execute bold plans for a prosperous economy in a thriving community. Whereas, progress towards this future is underway in Massachusetts, which is among national leaders on climate initiatives with over 100,000 jobs in the state's clean energy sector, named a top energy-efficient state for the past decade by the American Council for an Energy-Efficient Economy. Whereas, North Hampton has an engaged city government and has undertaken a number of important steps on climate and the environment, such as the Sustainable North Hampton Comprehensive Plan and the Climate Resilience and Regeneration Plan, such that the city is well-placed to implement the critical transition away from fossil fuels and to advance a robust, carbon-free, equitable economy and the improved health and quality of life that will result. Whereas, on April 22nd, 2016, world leaders from 175 countries recognized the threat of climate change and the urgent need to combat it by signing the Paris Agreement, agreeing to keep warming, quote, "well below 2 degrees Celsius" and above pre-industrial levels, unquote, and to, quote, "pursue efforts to limit the temperature increase to 1.5 degrees Celsius," unquote. And Mayor David J. Narckwitz committed to the Paris Accord on behalf of North Hampton. And whereas marginalized populations in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and worldwide, including people of color, immigrants, indigenous communities, low-income individuals, people with disabilities, and the unhoused, are already disproportionately affected by climate change and will continue to bear an excessive burden as temperatures increase, oceans rise, and natural disasters worsen. Whereas, nearly 400 cities, districts, and counties across the world collectively representing over 34 million people have recently declared or officially acknowledged the existence of a global climate emergency, including over 200 Massachusetts cities and towns such as Boston, Lexington, Acton, and 10 towns on Cape Cod. And whereas declaring the climate crisis as an emergency is a crucial first step for aligning residents around the urgency of the global climate breakdown. And whereas declaring that the climate crisis is an emergency demonstrates that our government agencies acknowledge that addressing climate change will require an emergency response and emergency speed. And whereas the crisis caused by climate change also presents a major opportunity to invest in healthy energy, transportation, land use, and agriculture systems that will deliver both immediate and sustained benefits to all and reduce future risks from climate change. Now, therefore be it resolved, the City Council of North Hampton affirms that human activity caused the climate crisis and that fossil fuels are the primary cause. Be it further resolved, the City Council of North Hampton hereby declares that a climate emergency threatens our city, state, and nation, as well as humanity broadly, and that a mobilization to meet this challenge is both a moral imperative and unprecedented opportunity to stabilize the climate, remedy environmental harms, create clean energy jobs, and improve human lives. Yet further resolved, that the members of the North Hampton City Council call on city government and staff and all North Hampton civic groups, businesses, and residents to commit to climate mobilization efforts, to a climate mobilization effort to bring net citywide carbon emissions to zero no later than the year 2050. Though we advocate for an increased state and federal assistance that we can aim for carbon neutrality by 2030. Yet further resolved, the city of North Hampton's climate mobilization should also, one, accelerate adaptation and resilience strategies in preparation for intensifying local and global climate impacts; two, continue to protect trees, forests, and other open spaces because of their ability to draw carbon out of the atmosphere and store it; three, protect the habitats and corridors of wildlife that are vulnerable to the impacts of climate change; and four, ensure that the costs of such mobilization efforts do not unfairly burden those who are economically or socially disadvantaged and that the benefits of a realized sustainable future accrue to all. Yet further resolved, that the administrative assistants of the City Council shall send a copy of this resolution to Representative Sabadosa and Senator Joe Comerford, as well as Governor Charles Baker, DOAR Commissioner Patrick Woodcock, and the co-chairs and vice-co-chairs of the Joint Committee on Telecommunications, Utilities, and Energy, Senators Mike Barrett and Mark Patako, and Representatives Jeffrey Roy and Paul Mark. Okay, it's already on the floor, so I will turn to the sponsors and ask if they would like to speak. Counselor Foster.
Thank you. The, when the Extinction Rebellion Group approached me with, you know, the request for a resolution to declare a climate emergency, I was enthusiastic about that. And we talked a little bit about the timing and the context for it, given how much North Hampton has already done around climate. And I like that we acknowledge that in the resolution. You know, the resolution for the Green New Deal several years ago did include language referring to it as a climate emergency. And it also felt to stand boldly and say it's a climate emergency was important to do. With Earth Day coming up on April 22nd, that's, even though it's not in the language of the resolution, that's the reason for the timing. And also, I just want to highlight the one paragraph that really stands out to me that I think is important is that we're calling on city government staff, civic groups, businesses, and residents. And I think that's an important call out because it's all of us. We all have a role here. And so as a city, calling on the city to continue to commit toward carbon neutrality and climate initiatives. And we're also naming civic groups, businesses, residents to expand the reach. It's, yes, city and city policy, we have a lot here that we can do, as well as all of these other groups that can contribute toward this. And then the last thing is, we did write this prior to the Massachusetts Act creating a next-generation roadmap for Massachusetts, which is a fantastic and a wonderful start. And that, you know, has 2050 as a goal. And I know that the, the city has said that with additional state and federal resources, we could aim for carbon neutrality for 2030. But recognizing the landscape in which we are right now, that we don't have the resources to aim for 2030, but I think it's important to name, to name sooner is better. Though we've, you know, official state policy right now is looking at 2050.
Thank you. Counselor Jarrett.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to say that I think, you know, this is an issue we have, as a city, made considerable progress on, our recent resilience and regeneration climate plan. It's a testament to that, the investment in energy efficiency, the stretch code, land use regulations, supporting walking, bicycling, and public transit. And it's just that we are moving nowhere near fast enough. And so we need to bring the issue to the forefront again and again. And I think, you know, there are so many other issues pulling at our attention, and they are important issues. And justice and climate must work together. I don't think we can solve one without the other. And I just want to note that we have already made the commitment to city buildings being carbon neutral by 2030, which is fabulous. And I look forward to trying to figure out how we can get other aspects of the city there and the rest of us outside of the scope of the city and to really consider how much of the scope comes from the products and the services or the things that we get from far away and that we, that we import, and how much of that is a key part for all of us to be thinking about as we move toward this. And then I think there was a very slight Scrivener's error in the very last sentence. Co-chairs and vice-co-chairs, where it says vice-co-chairs, there's no apostrophe. Not apostrophe, dash, hyphen. That's the word.
We knew it. Counselor Mayori.
Oh, you can see me. I'll keep this brief, but I just, I do want to thank Counselor Foster, Harrison Blument, Extinction Rebellion, and Counselor Jarrett, because I, I feel this really is important to do. It really can't be stated enough. It's, I think what we are, what we're doing with this resolution is just acknowledging the need to act now to all the causes and the impacts of climate change. And that's offering political commitment, which sometimes is the hardest part. It's a, it's really a call for a shift in our mindset for residents, businesses, municipal government, and larger government bodies. This resolution is aligned with the climate and resilience and regeneration plan, and I hope that it will act as a guidepost as we carry with us, you know, the guidepost that we can carry with us through all of our decision-making at every level. You know, the small decisions we make as consumers every day to the bigger decisions about, you know, how we plan the future of our city. Successful climate action necessitates the engagement and collaboration of all stakeholders. Simply, it's, it's really the only way out. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Other, Counselor Foster?
Thanks. This is super brief, but when Counselor Jarrett brought up the Scrivener's error, it reminded me, Counselor Shara, you did an incredible job reading it. But it's 20 cities and towns in Massachusetts. And just wanted to correct it because accidentally it was read as 200. So I just wanted to remove a zero from that for the, for the record. Thank you.
I was being optimistic.
That'd be great.
Sorry about that. Any other comments?
Yeah.
I'm gonna comment.
All right, Counselor Labarge.
Thank you. I want to thank the sponsors. This is a definite emergency, and we need to move very quickly on this. I also want to let Counselor Jarrett know that our city has been working very, very tirelessly on helping us in the departments, central service, right down the line, of making many changes in our departments with climate and the need of immediate changes. And I want to thank David Pomeroy, everybody else for working to help us with climate change. So I will support this, and it's in dire need. Definitely dire need, and we need to act now, and that's what I'm saying.
Thank you. Okay, other comments? Um, I will also add my thanks to the sponsors and also echo what Counselor Labarge just said and thank our city departments who do work very hard to achieve these goals. You know, I fully agree that we must reach farther and faster to aim for carbon neutrality by 2030 instead of 2050. And it's really something that will take work from every group and every constituency. But that makes sense, right? Because it pertains to all of us. There is no one for whom this issue isn't important or doesn't pertain or doesn't affect their lives. So, so thank you all for, for this resolution. Okay. Seeing, Counselor Dwight, are you like pondering? I'm like getting vibes. Okay. Seeing no further discussion, a roll call, please, Laura, on first reading.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe. Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
And Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in first reading. I feel like my mic's on like a five-second delay or something. Okay, next, we have 21.233, a resolution to review and revise the rules and committees of the City Council. This is on first reading, and it is in the City Council on April 1st, 2021, upon the recommendation of Counselor William Dwight. Whereas, the City Council of North Hampton, on a regular basis and as the needs arise, must review and revise the rules that prescribe the processes by which the body shall deliberate. And whereas, the City Council must also periodically reconsider and evaluate the committees of the council to determine how they may best serve the council. Whereas, the COVID-19 pandemic required significant changes in the way the council convenes and conducts its business. Whereas, the open meeting law of the Commonwealth requirements continue to evolve in meaningful ways as the council conducts its business remotely via a changing technology. Whereas, the City Council of North Hampton abides by and upholds the principles and the spirit of open government. Whereas, some council rules have been rendered outdated and void by recent decisions by the Attorney General and the governor in order to allow safe participation and continuity in government. Now, therefore be it resolved, City Council requests that the council president appoint a select committee dedicated to the review of the council rules and council committees to assemble at a time determined by the president. And be it further resolved, this committee shall deliver to the council the time-determined-by-the-president recommendations to be considered. And be it further resolved, that the president shall determine the members of the committee, which may include individuals who are not city councillors.
Move approval, please.
Motion was made by Counselor Dwight and I think seconded by Counselor Nash. Um, Counselor Dwight.
So, at the risk of stating the obvious, I suppose, but the fact that we are struggling through this wheezy technology, but this is actually, a year ago, this congregation would be illegal under state law. We would not be allowed to participate this way. That has since changed. It may change back. I don't know. That remains to be seen. But obviously, it's presented new challenges and new opportunities that actually were never considered under our rules and that it's appropriate for us to reconsider it. Because clearly, even as we go back to what I'll generously describe as normal, if we go back to that, the fact is that this form, this type of participation will, will continue and continue to be allowed. And for many, it'll be the only choice they have. In fact, actually, it's worth noting that this type of participation also expands opportunities for people to serve as representative government where they would, might not have been able to do previously. And I, I think it's appropriate and necessary for us to try to anticipate what's coming, address what's here, and realign our rules so that, one, principally, they promote and advance transparency and open government, abide by Massachusetts general law, and at the same time, provide the best, most fair and equitable access to the council. Principally, so that we may deliberate in a process that is fair and open, but also efficient in many respects. The, you know, some of the challenges will, that we've experienced are going to need to be addressed as well, and should be covered under our rules. So it's my hope that I have a feeling, just a sneaky suspicion, since I'm the proponent of this, that I may be tagged for the committee. I'm not asking to be, just to be clear. But I may be, but I, I look forward to having this conversation with other the councillors. I also think that the council president may consider other folks. I mean, you heard in public comment Ezekiel Baskin commenting on what his hopes and aspirations were for that could be covered under the council rules or some. And, and then also, we should review our committees to see if point in fact, they're doing the best that they can. Or is there a need to expand committees, modify committees, create new committees, depending on, on the circumstances as they change on the ground. So I look forward to the opportunity of having this discussion. Now, mind you, whatever rules are generated out of this eventually, I'm probably not going to have to ever abide by it. So, I, yeah, be careful if you're going to appoint me.
Noted. Okay, Counsel Nash, then Counsel Foster.
Yeah, I just want to really quickly say, I agree with everything that Counselor Dwight just shared. It's, you know, we're in a new world here, and we really should evaluate how we're doing our meetings and, you know, what's worked, what's not working. And, and take advantage of, you know, living in this, this time using this technology. I, I think it's been a real boon for a lot of people to be able to zoom into meetings. We've seen lots of new faces, heard lots of new ideas, and we don't want to lose that. And, but I think there's things we want to preserve as well, so. Oh, God, I probably just got myself on this committee. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Counsel Foster.
Counselor Dwight, I'd like to thank you for bringing this forward and, and bringing up the attention. It's actually been on my mind for a while that these need for changes. And so I, I think it's clear that this is the time to step back and evaluate where we are, where we're heading, the big picture. You know, and it's funny because just over a year ago, Counselor Mayory and I were exploring, not early March, I guess, what, what possibilities there may be to allow remote participation for public comment. And then here we are. And it's true, I've seen it. You know, the, the cross-section of people participating in our meetings who would not have been able to get to council chambers at seven o'clock on a Thursday is, is, you know, is pretty exciting. And then, you know, for me, as a parent of young kids, I have had a couple of meetings where remote participation is why I was able to be here. And at the same time, to echo Counselor Nash's point, there are things we don't want to lose. So I think this is an exciting opportunity to reevaluate. Unlike the previous speakers, I will raise my hand and say, this is a committee in which I would like to participate, so.
Also noted, Counsel Jarrett, then Counsel LeBarge. Okay, I just need to note, it can't be like a quorum, you guys understand, right? Okay.
Um, yeah, this is very exciting and interesting. You know, I definitely, as I first came on the council, I, I certainly, I studied the rules in great detail and noticed what's out of date. And I'm, I'm also really excited to get, I want to say, I'm very excited to get back in person with you all and in person with constituents. I think there's an element of that that is so that leads to so much more human connection and this, and a, a sense of each other that we've been missing. And I think it's in some ways led to some of the difficulty that, that we've had and some of the sort of division and, and factionalism over the last year. So I look forward to talking more with people face to face. At the same time, I'm also really interested in continuing the remote participation as an option and having both of those so that we just have more accessibility for everyone. So I'm definitely in support of this resolution. But I was curious also, so this is a resolution in support of creating a select committee, but it is not a resolution to create a select committee. Is that correct? There will be a separate one to create the select committee? Or just, you know, our rules state that there should be a resolution to create a select committee? So I'm just checking about that.
This was, in point, in fact, a resolution to create a, a committee without, and you make a good point, without actually specifically saying so. So if, if you want to add in another, now therefore, but essentially, it was, it was a request of the council president to assemble a committee. But in doing so, that was the hope that that's what I was projecting, was that this is a request. This is a resolution to create such committee.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification. You know, maybe in the second reading, we could have that, that language be clear.
Spoken like a person who's read the rules. Well done.
Counsel LeBarge.
Yes, I definitely agree with Counselor Dwight. I definitely agree that it's time for change. Definitely a time for change. I really feel, being on city council for quite a long time, the dire need of adding on new committees, I think that's extremely valuable here. I think we've all gone through a different type of change. And that was with Zooming and not having the actual contact like at council chambers. It's, it's valuable. It's valuable to be out there. I go out and see residents. I'll do with department heads, I do site visits, the six-feet distancing. It's not the same, but I am going to say I'm very interested, hopefully, that I can be on this committee because I definitely want to be part of the change of it and going into a new direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Counsel Quinlan.
I just also want to thank Counsel Dwight for bringing this forward. And, and, you know, I think you make great points that, just about some of the modernization that we all, I think, even discussed at our, at our very first meeting together, which was in person, of course. But, you know, I, I remember being at that meeting, having read the rules and thought like, oh, we're going to discuss the rules. So maybe there's a couple of things that I could bring, that's new ideas or whatever. And then you walk in, it's like, well, we're going to pass these rules. And, you know, well, if we want to make changes to them, we'll talk about it later. And so I, I remember at the moment being like, oh, okay, well, I wonder if we'll do that. And I particularly interested in discussing, and, and again, maybe, maybe I'm part of this committee, maybe I'm not, and that's okay with me either way. But my, my thoughts about meeting times and places is, you know, something that we've discussed, you know, before. And I, I think, you know, we, we've all, everyone that's spoken here has talked about the increased participation because of remote. But I also think when we're in person, increased participation through making ourselves accessible to, to the community in different locations and different times would be, would be great. So thank you all very much.
Hey. Counsel Mayory.
Yes, thank you. And just briefly, it's just gotten, gotten me really thinking, even before you brought this up, about how can we, you know, with the, it may not be expanding committees, although I hear Counsel LeBarge, you're making more committees, but really looking at mission of our, our current committees and commissions. Because I see the work of like, for example, some of the ordinance review work or the public safety review work is really going to be kind of ongoing. And maybe there's a way we can kind of couch that into some of the missions of the committees or change them. So, so they do address those in an ongoing way. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Nash, did I see your hand again?
Yeah, I just want to say, I would happily serve if you chose me to serve on this commission, committee. Thank you.
I'm keeping a tally. All right, Counsel Dwight.
Just to be clear, it doesn't, it, it doesn't disqualify councillors from participating or sharing your ideas. These are the rules of the council. And ultimately, the recommendations that come forward from this committee, of course, will have opportunity to be discussed and debated and amended on the floor as well. But just so, no one's disqualified from participating. We will definitely have to do what we're doing today, disassemble as a full council meeting. But the, but I think a core group should be focused on the issue at hand and that other councillors could share their best hopes or the things that drive them crazy. And we'll try to make adjustments that, by the way, have to abide by the conditions of the charter and also mass general law, those being the two big guiding principles. But beyond that, you know, it's your party, so you get to figure out who sits where and who eats what, so.
Thank you for that. I was gonna, was gonna make a similar point, but not, you know, at the end, not that one. But that, yes, this, this will, this is something that will be discussed by all of us, so we will all participate in this discussion. Which actually brings me to, I, I want to thank Counsel Dwight for bringing this forward in this way. Because often how rules change, rules changes happen are a councillor just kind of goes off and writes up a whole bunch of new stuff for rules and then presents it. And we deliberate on it and make decisions. And I love collaborative processes, and this, this is a much more collaborative process with more councillors. So I appreciate this approach. So I want to thank you for that. And also, I just want to note one thing. You said a year ago, this meeting would have been illegal. And I just need to correct the record because we held our first remote meeting, and it was completely legal because the governor had changed open meeting law to allow it on March 19th. So a little bit more than a year ago, it would have been illegal. But we were fully within the law. All right, all. Any further discussion? Counsel Jarrett.
Um, so I'm looking at the rules for select committees. And are, so are we thinking that this will be modified by the second reading in order to do some things that will actually create a select committee? So, for example, the rules say, the resolutions shall specify the composition and scope of the select committee. And I think that's probably the only thing that's maybe missing. I mean, it does, it does talk about the scope. But in terms of, you know, the, I think some of the past ones have said the number of people or the things like that. So, but, but that could wait till the second reading if necessary.
Counsel Dwight.
It was, it was my thought that as the appointing authority, that the council president would be able to dictate what that scope would be. And maybe I, and, and as I said, also at a time determined by the, the presiding officer. Principally because the way the, where agendas are setting up lately, this is going to, you know, I, I think it's up to the council president to try and figure out what would be the best opportunity that doesn't overburden us or create conflicting problems. And then by the same token, also thinking about what that composition would be and who, who the participants would be. The reason I left that open was, as I said, normally, all rules discussion have been exclusively by councillors. But I wanted to provide an opportunity, if the council president so desired, to expand that. I mean, obviously, the council rules are specifically for us and by us. And that is an authority that's granted to us under the charter. But I thought in, in the interest of, of open and good government, that maybe we would consider inviting people who, for instance, may have some, maybe parliamentarians or maybe people who are facilitators for meetings that, that, that are, that function maybe just to tweak more efficiently than ours do or something. And it'd be great to hear some input from them. Before, as I said previously, we've never heard from anyone else when we discuss our rules. And as Counsel Shara mentioned, in fact, usually, we deferred to the legal minds who were seated on the council at the time to draft whatever they came up with and they thought would best work. And then we duked it out on the council floor and banged them out. And then, and hence the document that we have now, which is very thorough and was very appropriate for the time. But, so that's, so as I said, a really long way of going about saying, I think it was better to leave it open. I would ask the council president to consider actually maybe having some recommendations by the second reading. And then we can embed that language in there to, because you're absolutely right. The rules do prescribe this, and I think it's appropriate that we conform to that, particularly since we're voting on changing the rules, so.
Um, I'm happy to have an amendment ready for the second reading that includes the composition. All right. Any further discussion? Being none, roll call, please, Laura, on a first reading.
Counsel Mayory.
Yes.
Counsel Nash.
Yes.
Counsel Quinlan.
Yes.
Counsel Shara.
Yes.
Counsel Thorpe.
Yes.
Counsel Dwight.
Yes.
Counsel Foster.
Yes.
Counsel Jarrett.
Yes.
And Counsel LeBarge.
Yes.
Okay, that passed in first reading. And we are up to the consent agenda. Usually, I'm going to read the consent agenda, and then actually, I'd like to take the items separately because there was a change to one item, and there are only two items. So therefore, we'll have to take these two separately. So first item is 21.232, appointment of Charlene Nardi as Finance Director for Referral to City Services Committee. And the second item is 21.236, petition for second-hand dealer license renewal for urban exchange. So, starting with the first item, the appointment of Charlene Nardi as Finance Director for Referral to City Services. Is there a motion?
I move, move to refer, please.
Made by Counsel Dwight, seconded by Counsel Thorpe. Any discussion? No longer the consent agenda. Counsel Quinlan.
Oh, it's not on the consent agenda, so we are going to discuss it.
I had to separate the consent agenda.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to ask Counsel LeBarge if this would be on the agenda for City Services this Monday.
For Charlene Nardi? No.
Yeah, no, it'll be next month.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Because she doesn't take, her job is not in effect until June.
So I think we, we do have a schedule for this, but it's going at the next meeting. The May meeting.
In May, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Foster.
I think you sort of answered, but I just wanted to hear it in black and white. So the schedule we have laid out, that timeframe will work for going to City Services and coming back to council, that will work for an appointment and, and the timeframe we need. back to council. That will work for an appointment and the timeframe we need.
More than enough, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
And Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Hey, that has been referred. So next is the petition for secondhand dealer license renewal for urban exchange. So the reason that I separated this out is that there initially on the agenda, there had been a denial of the license from the treasurer collector. But that actually was in error. And it is free to go forward. So I just wanted to note that. And I think, I think currently on the agenda, if you were to download it right now, that would have, that's been changed. But I wanted to make sure that that was noted, that there are not, there's nothing outstanding. And this petition can go through and the license renewal can go through.
Move to approval, let's.
Seconded.
Question made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor LaBarge. Any discussion? Counselor Nash. You're muted. Counselor Nash.
As I'm clicking on the link, I'm not seeing the item. So the item with the correction is not there. And I hate to be a stickler for something that needs to be approved. But I, I think we need to have the actual item before us, or at least I do to vote.
I, it's, it's there. Or if Laura could click on that, the link does show to the sign approval.
Really? It's coming up for you? It wasn't working for me?
All right, Counselor Jarrett is patiently waiting. Would?
I'm bringing it up. You know, I just swapped it out today. I didn't have it earlier because I wasn't able to go into City Hall to scan and email it. So I just put the permit denial form. Sorry to cause confusion, but.
Yeah, Counselor Nash, I just had to refresh the page because I had pulled it up earlier. And then it, it did, once I refreshed the agenda, I was able to click through to the correct item.
Thank you. That explains things.
Now that we've cleared that up, any further discussion? Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara. Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
And Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Okay, that has been renewed. So we are now going to recess for finance. Laura, will you please take the role of finance?
Sure. Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Here.
Counselor Shara. And Counselor Thorpe.
Here.
Hey, the first item is approval of minutes from March 4, 2021.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Made by Counselor Thorpe, seconded by Counselor LaBarge. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara. And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, those are approved. So let's move into the financial orders. And we have a whole bunch of CIP orders. First up is 21.219 FY22 CIP, Capital Improvement Program. In order to authorize borrowing $6 million for radio system upgrade in the City Council, April 1, 2021, upon the recommendation of the mayor, ordered that $6 million is appropriated to pay costs of upgrading the citywide radio system, including all costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor's, authorized to borrow said amount under Chapter 44, Section 71 of the general laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the city therefore. That the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary or convenient to carry out this project, that any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this order, unless any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs of the project approved by this order in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, and thereby reduce the amount of the authorized borrowing by a like amount.
Move a positive recommendation, please. Second.
Motion made by Counselor Quinlan, seconded by Counselor Thorpe. I see Mayor Narcoitz and Director Wright.
I briefly described this in the resolution phase of the agenda. And again, I would direct you, this was been a, a major interagency project. We've had a whole group that's been working on it from school and city to address. We have equipment that's aged out and in many cases is no longer even replaceable or serviceable. And we're, you know, buying components on eBay and places like that to keep it going. So we know we want to make an investment, but we wanted to do it in a strategic and thoughtful way. So we brought in an outside consultant to really look at our, our topography of the city, look at our existing tower locations, look at some of the impediments that we face, including some of our newer buildings, you know, school buildings and other buildings that, that have made it challenging for some of our older radio technology to be able to communicate through. So this is, you know, it's a major investment. But it will be an important one. And it will ensure that we, you know, do have the kind of communication among all of our departments. And, and that we, you know, we're buying equipment that can be supported going forward. So I believe we're, you know, we had, we had a consultant that was paid for in a prior project. And we're reviewing bids right now on the actual project, project itself. We haven't finalized that. But again, our thought process is that this authorization would be utilized over two fiscal years. Because it will, just the scope of the project and the time that it will probably take for procurement, et cetera, and construction that's required in some cases. So that's what the project's about. And I, obviously, I want to thank all of our, you know, particularly Kelly Schutze at the Communications Director at the Dispatch Center. She sort of was the lead on this project. Because obviously, dispatch is sort of the central hub for all city communications. And obviously, this is a press, a major importance for her team. Because inevitably, you know, after hours or in emergency situations, all of those communications between DPW, schools, parking, police, fire, all of that goes through the dispatch center. So to be able to have reliable communications, as well as have enough channel capacity. And this is especially true during like major events like Pride, or the Hot Chocolate Run, or things like that, where there's multiple departments that are, that are engaged. So that's the, that's the importance of the project. And I want to just commend all of our departments that have been working as sort of an interagency working group over several years to, to develop this approach.
Thank you. Counselor LaBarge.
Yes, Mayor, I think I heard you state something about you also checking into towers in the city. What do you mean by that?
Well, some of our radio, our radio, we have some towers right now. And some of our antennas, either some of them are either our towers or, or towers that are owned by the state police, or, or even other agencies. And so we have like repeater devices that help carry our radio signals around the city, to different parts of the city. You, you know, for example, we have a tower at the landfill. And, and so we have some equipment there as well. But especially to reach some of the further reaches of the city, like out in your ward. So part of this is looking at where do we have gaps and our, and how are we, you know, creating those links from towers? There's a tower down near the Clarion. Well, I said Clarion, sorry, that got torn down. Down by Atwood Drive. And, and we have equipment there that we maintain as well. So it's really looking at, I, you know, this is a science. There's people, this is what they do. They look at, they, they're able to look at the community and look at the topography and look at all those issues. And actually map out where you would position repeaters to make sure that we have communication throughout the entire city. And then some of it's equipment related, and especially some of the impediments in terms of communications within the schools, and being able to communicate school to school in cases where, you know, the superintendent has to, you know, do a shelter in place or something like that, to be able to communicate from school to school, or to the central offices. It's the same radio, you know, many of you see their principals out with a radio, talking to the bus drivers. It's, that's also part of the same, same radio system. And so we're, we're just trying to make sure that we're being smart if we're going to invest, that we don't have six different departments investing in different equipment that doesn't talk to each other, and that isn't workable on the channels that we have. So this is, you know, it's a, it's, it's an important part of our infrastructure as a city, delivering services, communication infrastructure. So we're, we're, that's why we did this major study.
I thank you for that information.
Counselor Nash.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, so if we, if we had a cahoots type program, or a, or hopefully a resilience hub, they would also be part of this network, correct?
Yeah, certainly. If we had, if we had civilian, you know, civilian responders, well, obviously, we do have some civilian responders already. But anybody that was part of the city's communication network would certainly, this would be, this would be important to them as well. You know, if we, if we outfitted vehicles with radios, or people had handheld radios, it certainly would be part of that as well.
Thank you.
Counselor Quinlan.
Well, first, I just want to say, I'm old school, so I would have called it the Hilton. But I actually had a.
My prom was there, actually. My high school prom was there. It's embedded in my brain.
That's so great. But I had a question from a resident of Ward 1 about this, asking if there was any, you know, exploration of, instead of wiring and this sort of thing, if there was, if there was a possibility of satellite usage instead. Just, you know, in terms of how the city could communicate that way, instead of more wiring and towers and so forth. So I just thought I would ask for that.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I, I guess I'd have to ask the satellite question. I mean, I know we use some satellite technology for, and I think in one case, we use it for the getting communication up to the wastewater, to the water treatment plant correction. But again, I'm not, I don't think we're talking about a wired system. It is, it, it would be an over the air type system. And so I don't, like, the towers themselves are not wired. There's actually satellite dishes on the towers that are repeaters from, from, so they're sort of like, not satellites in space, but satellites that are on these towers that, that repeat. And so, but I don't, so, yeah, I, I can try to get you some more information, maybe on second reading. I can talk to some of our, the folks who are really more in the weeds on this than I am about that and the distinction.
Wow, thank you.
I believe we set a precedent that if someone brings up an event that happened in a location in Northampton, then the appropriate thing is to provide a picture. So, prom pictures, please. Thank you. Um, any other questions or comments?
Rocking the white tux, you can believe it. Teeny, style.
Okay.
Photo.
Seeing no further non-prom comments, roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Quinlan.
Sir, yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward with the positive recommendation. Next up is 21.220 FY22 CIP. In order to authorize borrowing $450,000 for hotel bridge, and lit up upon the recommendation of the mayor, ordered that $450,000 is appropriated to pay costs of making structural and road surface improvements to the hotel bridge, to accommodate bicycle and pedestrian traffic, including all costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor's, authorized to borrow said amount under Chapter 44, Section 71 of the general laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the city therefore. And the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary or convenient to carry out this project. And that any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this order, unless any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of the issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of the cost of the project approved by this order in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, and thereby reduce the amount of the authorized borrowing by a like amount.
Move a positive recommendation, please. Second.
Counselor Quinlan, seconded by.
This is, um, this is probably one of my favorite projects in the capital plan this year. And we don't have many bridges in Northampton, but the ones we have are incredibly old and historic and challenging to maintain. I spent the first many years of, of being mayor, working, you know, working with DPW to solve the issues around the Clement Street Bridge, which the neighborhood loved and adored and wanted to keep open. And it's a very challenging, you know, trust style bridge. And then the second one that's been another sort of beloved bridge is this hotel bridge in Leeds, which was, you know, constructed in 1881. And unfortunately, because of deterioration over the years, it first had to be closed to road traffic and then eventually couldn't even sustain foot traffic or pedestrian traffic. And the Leeds Civic Association have been incredible champions of this bridge. I've got a, several faded T-shirts, Leeds Hotel Bridge T-shirts from fundraising efforts. And there've been tea parties on the bridge to raise money and brought in outside consultants to try to come up with a plan, to try to get it reopened, at least for pedestrians. It just has so many challenges because it's an old bridge. There, it's over a body of water, which presents significant challenges because of the coatings and the, and the paint that's on the bridge. And just, and then there's also, if you look really carefully, there's also utilities that, that run along the bridge that make it challenging. So, long story short, Director LaScalia has been working diligently with the Leeds Civic Association to just try to figure out some kind of a solution. So we finally hired an engineer who's come up with a solution that we believe will allow us to safely reopen the bridge to bicycle and pedestrian traffic, which will be great for the entire village, obviously great for those neighborhoods that it connects. It's close to the, to the rail trail network already. And so this borrowing would essentially allow us to take those engineered designs, go out to bid, and hopefully finally, you know, take down those jersey barriers and fencing and all the other things that have had to keep that beautiful bridge closed and get it reopened again.
Counselor LaBarge, then Counselor Mayory.
Yes, there is such valuable history with the hotel bridge. My husband and his family, large family, eight of them, lived on Water Street. They lived, they used that bridge every day. My husband rode his bicycle on it. Also trucks that came over that bridge went to the Tatro store to deliver food and so forth. Our family has tons of pictures, tons of pictures of the hotel bridge. And it's gone from family to family, generation to generation. And my husband himself is so happy about the restoration that will happen to this bridge. And I am in full support of this 100%. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mayory.
Yes, unmuted. Yes, I just, I'm thrilled about this. I actually got very excited when I saw this was in the works. And I feel very fortunate for all the work that Leeds Civic, Leeds Civic Association and Leeds residents have done. I mean, I think that is what we need to see, is that how beloved this bridge is, that people have worked for years to bring this back, to bring it, to open it back up for pedestrians and, and bicyclists. When I first moved here, it was already closed for vehicles. But artists used to set up their canvases on there. And I would just bring my coffee and would bring my kids and, and, and just be, be together. There's no real businesses down in Leeds Village. This is really a huge part of the Leeds Village identity. So thanks, so thanks for everyone for persevering. Yeah, and I just wanted to add so much. Um, yeah, and I just wanted to add so much, uh, so much great history is, has been shared with the counselor, uh, the counselors, uh, because of this. And I didn't realize it had been built from a kit, that the parts were made in Canton, Ohio and put together in Northampton. And there's only twenty seven like this in the entire country. So it's very special and I, I really hope everyone will be, um, behind this because it, it's such a focal point and such a historic point and really a seasonal meeting place. And it's, it's, it's going to just be an active place as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Quinlan.
I just wanted to, uh, thank Counselor Mayory for that little bit of history on it. Uh, and, uh, also Counselor LaBarge for your family's personal history there. I think that's great. And, and a thank you to the, to the number of residents of Leeds that, uh, in George Cohouf, that used to be in Leeds, uh, who sent us emails this week advocating for this money too. Uh, that was just great to read all of that and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And of course, the number one question I always get asked is why did you call it the hotel bridge? And of course there used to be a hotel. Uh, there was a, a very hopping hotel that burned down unfortunately, but it used to be on the other side. That was the way to get to the hotel in Leeds, uh, back in the day. So, um, I think, I can't remember if there's a plaque there or not, but maybe when we get it restored, we'll have to get a, one of those historical, you know, plaques, uh, that we have up around town to just sort of give people more of the history of the bridge and what was there. So I know we have a flood.
There's no plaque and I think, oh, excuse me.
It's okay. Go ahead.
Now my, I'm a little, my, my, uh, vocals are jagged. I was just gonna say there is no plaque there, but I think it was because they're, uh, waiting for the renovation. So that would be fabulous to have a plaque there with the history.
Okay, um, I'll just add that I, it was really lovely to get so many emails from people with so much context around this, um, this order. And so, uh, it just, it feels really nice to vote on it and to see how much it means to people. And, um, you know, I, I, I knew the importance for a, um, a pedestrian and a, and a bike roadway, but I didn't, I didn't know all this history that I've learned in the past few days. So I'm very appreciative of it. Um, any other comments? Okay, roll call, please Laura.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
And Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward with the positive recommendation and we are up to F Y point, uh, two, twenty one point two two one F Y twenty two C I P ordered to authorize borrowing, borrowing six hundred and eighty five thousand dollars for D P W vehicle. Um, since, since the language, Mayor Norquist, the language is all the same for these except for the first line, am I right?
Um, I believe so. Um, I, uh, do you have the, is the order up? I'm just trying to pull, I've got too many screens open. I apologize. Yes, it is. Yeah, that's correct. All of the, all of the bonding in chapter forty four, that's all language that were required, uh, as part of, by, by bond council.
Okay, so, um, so since we have many more of these, I'm gonna read the first, uh, line of them. And then we've already read the, the rest of it. Um, so this is ordered that six hundred and eighty five thousand dollars is appropriated to pay costs of acquiring various vehicles and other equipment for the Department of Public Works, including all costs incidental and related thereto. Uh, that to meet this appropriation, well, it's a long sentence. Um, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under chapter forty four, section seven one of the general laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes, city therefore. It's really a run on. Okay, I'm gonna end there. Um, and the rest of it is the same as the last few and will continue to be. Um, so now I'm looking for a motion.
Move a positive recommendation, please. I can.
Motion made by Counselor Quinlan, seconded by Counselor Thorpe.
So, um, I, I might, I might just share my screen quickly if I'm allowed. It's, it's, this is just the page in the capital program that Director LaScalia always puts in that talks about. And I know counselors who've gone on the tour of, of the D P W facility and particularly the barns and the repair maintenance facility is, you know, talked, heard from, uh, Director LaScalia about their efforts to keep old equipment going as long as they can. But then obviously, uh, acknowledging that, you know, when you start to have to put thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars into vehicles to keep them going, um, that, um, that it's sort of, uh, you know, penny wise and pound foolish. So it's better to, to, to have a replacement plan for some of these pieces of equipment. You'll see here, you know, some of the dates of equipment, um, you know, uh, the, the sidearm mower that's being replaced. That's the one that's used to mow, um, along, you know, sidewalks and roads and bike trails. I mean, that's a, that's a going on twenty one year old mower, um, that needs replacement. We've got some other, uh, older mowers, uh, sidewalk plow tractor from nineteen ninety eight. Um, and, um, and then further down you see, uh, you know, an eighty six surplus, uh, one that we got basically for military surplus. Um, that's, uh, sort of reaching the end of its useful life, um, and some other loaders and, and, uh, and dump trucks. So, um, these are strategic investments in the fleet. Um, and that Director LaScalia is, um, you know, keeps a, a very, uh, close inventory of her vehicles and also, you know, works with the mechanics to identify, you know, what the maintenance costs are. Um, and so, you know, we try to replace vehicles on a regular basis and particularly just, uh, you know, important parts of, uh, uh, equipment, particularly our mowers, um, because we've, we've expanded our fields and our, our, um, rail trails um, so significantly over the last several years, uh, particularly with Florence Fields. Um, so, um, that's also a part of this as well. So that's the inventory that you can find in the capital program itself, um, in that section for F Y twenty twenty two.
Hey. Questions? All right. Seeing none, roll call, please. Wait, is this on the floor?
Yes.
Your roll call, please Laura, on a positive recommendation. Thank you.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
And Counselor Shara.
Yeah. Okay, that moves forward with the positive recommendation and we are up to twenty one point two 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 F Y twenty two C I P in order to appropriate five hundred thousand dollars from capital stabilization to Arch Street Bridge repairs. And this one's brief. Um, ordered that pursuant to F Y twenty twenty two F Y twenty five six capital improvement program that five hundred thousand dollars from the capital stabilization fund be appropriated for repairs to the Arch Street, Arch Street Bridge in Leeds.
Move a positive recommendation.
Seconded.
Motion made by Counselor Quinlan, seconded by Counselor LaBarge. Discussion. Our counselor, I mean, Mayor Norquist.
So, um, another bridge, um, uh, I, I didn't mention it the last time, but you know, all of our city bridges, um, are, are inspected, um, and they're, they're registered with the state and they get inspected on a regular basis. Um, and so oftentimes we're, um, we're responding to inspectional reports that happened. Um, uh, that's, you know, recently we've had, well, obviously we all know about the issues with Clement Street when the state closed Clement Street until we could make repairs. And more recently, we've had to make repairs, uh, to the Pine Street Bridge. Um, but the, the Arch Street Bridge, um, so this is the, this is at the, um, it's a triple span bridge that's located nearest to the intersection of Main Street and our street in Leeds. And, um, again, M A S D O T inspects it on a regular basis and they've identified, um, a number of needed repairs. Um, and so, um, uh, some of them are structural, some of them are regarding the control of water. Um, and, um, and so, once again, we've worked with an engineer to try to engineer the fixes to the problem. And, um, and so this project would do it. This is again, you know, this is a bridge, um, that was built in eight, in the eighteen fifties. Uh, and it's, I guess what's considered a dry laid masonry bridge. Um, so it's another old bridge does, you know, carry traffic and it does, it is subject to state inspection. So, um, we've got a number of, um, uh, repairs that have to be done. Um, uh, so that's what this, uh, that's what this one's about.
Hey. Counselor Jarrett, then Counselor LaBarge.
Um, so this is not the bridge that the bike trail goes over, that Arch Street goes under.
Um, so, uh, it's, it's on Main Street.
Okay.
It's not.
It's not, okay. It's not on Arch Street.
Uh, yeah, it's where it's, it's, it's next to the intersection where Arch Street and Main Street. I don't know why they called it Arch Street Bridge. Um, I, I'm not sure where it got the name, but that's what it's always been called. Uh, or I'm, I, well, I guess the Main Street Leeds Bridge or the Arch, Main Street, Arch Street Bridge. It's got lots of different names, but yeah, it's not that one that you, that the bike trail goes over the top of.
Yeah.
Across from Marty Electric, across from Marty Electric.
Yeah, the name was just confusing because it's actually not on Arch Street, but I understand now. Thanks.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, roll call, please Laura, on a positive recommendation.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Hey, that moves forward with a positive recommendation and next up is upon the recommendation of the mayor. Uh, twenty one point two two three F Y twenty two C I P in order to appropriate twenty five thousand dollars from cemetery perpetual care for cemetery projects. Ordered that pursuant to F Y twenty twenty two F Y twenty five six capital improvement program, that twenty five thousand dollars be appropriated from the cemetery trust and income to be used to fund restorative work at the city's cemeteries.
Move a positive recommendation, please.
I can.
Motion made by Counselor Quinlan, seconded by Counselor LaBarge. Mayor Norquist.
So this is part of an ongoing, uh, multi-year commitment, um, that, that I made in a prior, uh, capital improvement program. Um, you know, we did historic master plans of our city cemeteries. Um, and so we've been doing, um, a, a lot of work, uh, primarily in the realm of historic renovation. Um, we've been working very closely with the Historical Commission, um, and Sarah LaValle and have been successful in, um, securing some state grants and then using these funds to, um, to help supplement that. Um, so we're continuing to work through the, uh, the historic master plan, you know, working on the highest priority, priority one, uh, gravestones. Um, and, um, at all three of the cemeteries in question, Park and, and Bridge and West Farms. And, um, and so we're, this is another sort of, you know, we, we've laid out a multi-year, uh, commitment to our cemetery where we're using trust funds, um, and investing twenty five thousand, um, each year, uh, that the Parks and Cemetery Division can draw from, uh, to work on these projects in conjunction, hopefully with more state funding, which helps that go much further. Um, and, and sadly, um, we've, uh, we've, well, we've had some natural damage to some of our stones recently. So it's actually expanded some of the work that we need to do. Some of these high winds have actually, in some cases, knocked over some of our most brittle, um, uh, headstones. So, um, so we're, we've, our, the weather has actually taken a toll on some. So, uh, so there's a lot to be done to preserve these historic cemeteries. Obviously, we talked about in a previous iteration, you know, the beautiful new fence at Bridge Street, which was, um, which is mostly a gift from an anonymous donor that also, uh, we, we matched with some of these cemetery funds, uh, to be able to, to fund as well. So that's what this is about, multi-year commitment to our cemeteries.
Um, that's interesting about the winds. It, it just strikes me that not even those that have passed on are, uh, immune to the effects of climate change apparently. Um, comments? Okay, seeing none, um, roll call, please, on positive recommendation.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
That moves forward with, uh, positive recommendation and we are up to twenty one point two two four. Uh, F Y twenty twenty two C I P in order to appropriate one point eight million dollars of free cash to various projects.
Move a positive, um, recommendation to both city council.
Seconded.
Motion is made by Counselor LaBarge, seconded by Counselor Thorpe. Um, this is upon the recommendation of the mayor ordered that pursuant to, oh wait, um, pursuant to F Y twenty twenty two F Y twenty five six capital improvement program, the following capital projects be appropriated from F Y twenty one capital, general fund, undesigned fund balance. I'm really sorry, I have to let it cat out. One sec. He could hear his food dishes, but he couldn't get out the door and it was cruel. I had to do that. Sorry. Um, okay, Central Services Academy Music Fire Suppression System upgrades, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Central Services Senior Center Paint Exterior Building, a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Central Services Florence Fire Station Pave Rear Parking Lot, sixty five thousand dollars. Central Services Lighting Upgrades, Multiple City Facilities, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Dispatch Radio Positions Upgrades, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I T Northampton Public Schools Wireless System Upgrade and Replacement, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Planning, Comprehensive Planning, sixty thousand dollars. Fire Rescue Replaced, two thousand and seven Mechanic Plow Vehicles, sixty five thousand dollars. Fire Rescue Replaced Cardiac Monitors and Four Ambulance Units, seventy five thousand dollars. Northampton Public Schools Replaced, uh, two thousand and five thirty Passenger Wheelchair Bus, fifty five thousand dollars. Northampton Public School JFK Energy Management System, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Northampton Public Schools, uh, D W Facilities Assessment for Greenhouse Gas, sixty thousand dollars. Northampton Public Schools, Northampton High School, Repoint Chimney, forty thousand dollars. Smith-Vacational Agricultural High School Building C Boiler Replacement, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Smith-Vacational Agricultural High School Nurses Office Renovation, two hundred and six thousand dollars. Uh, Department of Public Works Sidewalk, a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars for a total of one million eight hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars. I think it's already on the floor.
So these are, these are some of the projects that we allocate, um, or that we indicated would be, um, sort of perfect for paying for with our free cash or undesigned fund balance, which is, you know, um, one of the things we use free cash for is to be able to pay for these one-time investments that aren't large enough to, or too large maybe for cap, for paying from it out of the operating budget, but are not large enough that you would bond for it. Um, so, um, the, uh, the list is not up, but there's, you, you can see it's across multiple departments and schools, cities. And, um, so I can certainly answer, try to, try my best to answer any questions you have about, um, about any of the projects.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yeah, it's a different question, Mayor. Um, the nurses' office renovation at two hundred and six thousand, can you explain that? Are you talking about adding another room on or?
Um, I think it's a, they've been doing a lot of work internally. Um, uh, you know, they, they did a, just did a, did a, over a whole new guidance suite. And, um, and they have, it's a, it's one of the older buildings and, and so they really need to do a fairly major renovation of their nurses' office. Um, and I believe it includes, you know, plumbing and I believe it includes, I don't, I don't think it's going to like, you know, be a, any kind of like a major, any expansion of the building per se. Um, but there's, uh, I, I know from when they did the, um, when they did the guidance suite, which, and I will just say that in a lot of these projects, they use students as well. They use them as laboratories for students to do electrical work and plumbing and, and other things like that. They obviously have to, you know, also working with outside contractors. But, um, uh, I can try to get you, uh, you know, if you want more sort of like square footage of the project, I can try to get that for you. Um, uh, but it's, it's not, we're not, I don't, I don't think we're, um, certainly not expanding the footprint of the building. Um, it's really just trying to bring an old, um, um, building up to, up to speed in terms of the nurses' office. Obviously nurses in our schools now, um, play, uh, uh, ever increasing role in many different areas, um, including, you know, now, uh, during the pandemic. It is taking a little bit of square feet, I think, from an adjacent room. So there might be one wall that's coming down, um, to try to give it a little more space. Um, but I don't think it's a, a significant, um, expansion, but I can, I can try to, um, I can try to get more details.
No, that's fine. I think you're explaining, you know, what's going on here. I was just a little concerned about the amount of money at two hundred and six thousand, just for a renovation of an office.
As I said, I'm, I'm fairly certain, um, knowing, uh, uh, knowing when we did the, um, the suite, uh, there, there was a, a lot of, there was a lot involved in trying to tie the, the, that new guidance, uh, room into the existing air systems. I know there's a lot of A D A compliance issues for the. I know there's a lot of A D A compliance issues for the for the nurses office as well that have to be addressed. So I I, yeah, um, that's, um, I think in the bathroom itself currently in the nurse's office, it's not currently A D A compliant. Um, so it's not accessible, you know, accessible by wheelchairs, et cetera. So I know that's one of the big pieces that they're trying to address. Um, so.
In other words, Mayor, is this similar to what's occurring at Ryan Road School, probably other schools? Where right now with the bathrooms, which I'm being very vocal about it, where we have young children in wheelchairs and we have to use a Hoya help to put them in and put them on the toilet. And I'm hearing two hundred and seven, seven thousand dollars and we cannot get that renovation to apply for A D L. Which is needed at that school.
Yeah, the um, the issue, the issue at the Ryan Road one is definitely specific to it, the wanting to have a technology installed. Um, I again, all I can tell you is that the facilities folks at N P S, you know, went, uh, you know, um, did not resubmit that project. I think they're trying to look at other ways to to engineer it, but it wasn't submitted this year by uh by the facilities folks at N P S, so I I don't, I can check with them about it to find out what the backstory is, but it was not a project that they resubmitted because um, I guess they were, well.
I know.
I can tell you, I can tell you why, because the facilities directors have been working on air filtration and and working on all kinds of other issues because of the pandemic probably, but um it may be a project that will come back to us in the future. Um, but for now, it's not something that, it's not in here because they didn't, uh, they didn't resubmit it.
Well, I know when I talked with the superintendent, he did tell me that they had it in there the first time. And then I think you just had stated recently that they found out it costs more money and I heard the same too, that the price was up there big time, so that's probably the reasons why it's been held back. Cause it's up in the two hundred thousands on that one too.
Yeah, and that's, that sounds right. I know we've talked about this at various times and um, and again, it's not uncommon for us to try to develop these capital projects and then to try to go back and value engineer them and try to figure out a different way to do it. Um, uh, you know, bids come in much higher than we're expected and, you know, and the other thing is, I I know the schools obviously have a lot of different projects that they're um trying to advance, so. Um, so this one, I I suspect will come back in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, any uh Counselor Jarrett?
Um, I was, uh, the line about sidewalks, I was wondering um if you know uh what what areas of town or what sidewalks or um might might be in that project for this year.
Yeah, I mean, this is a fund that, again, is a recurring fund like traffic calming and paving. I know that um, I know, and I know you know that there's a lot of um work going on right now around Pine Street and looking at the sidewalk connections on Pine Street, so I know that's one that's been identified. Um, I know that as we take on other uh, as we go out to bid for other paving contracts, that um, that uh, we we're gonna be looking to include sidewalks as part of them as well. Um, so I think we'll, I'll have a better sense of that once we get the rest of the paving uh work together and put out to bid. But inevitably, when we're doing streets over, including even North Farms Road last year, uh, we did major stretches of sidewalk there as well as, you know, connections to um, to the, to the uh recreational facility there. So, so that's, I don't, I don't think we have a specified list, but this is a fund that when the D B W does projects and there are sidewalks involved, they, she, uh, the D P W bundles this money with paving money, with traffic calming money uh to be able to extend sidewalks.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, roll call please Laura, a positive recommendation.
So Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe. Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
And Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
And that moves forward, positive recommendation, we're up to twenty one point two two five F Y twenty two C I P in order to appropriate one hundred and fifty thousand dollars from P E G access fund to I T Services Project. Ordered that pursuant to F Y twenty twenty two F Y twenty twenty six capital improvement program, that one hundred and fifty thousand dollars be appropriated from the P E G access and cable-related fund, fund two three three seven, to information technology services for the following projects. City server system replacement, one hundred thousand dollars in North Hampton Public Schools Wireless System Upgrade and Replacement, fifty thousand dollars.
Move a positive recommendation, please.
Motion made by Counselor Quinn, seconded by Counselor LaBarge, Mayor Narcoitz.
So these are, um, this is a norm, ongoing uh maintenance that we do to our, to our network systems and um, and the the reference to the P E G access is, you know, as part of our uh contract with Comcast. Um, there is, there are funds that are uh allotted to the city for capital improvement upgrades to our to our system. We've used them over time to to build out our I N A D and to make needed repairs. Um, a- a- another big chunk of that money um actually gets, uh, goes directly to um uh North Hampton Open Media that they use for theirs, but there is a capital component that comes to the city. And so these are projects that are part of a regular sort of maintenance or strategic replacement plan of components that we use these funds um from our uh, from our contract with Comcast to pay for. So that's why there's that reference to those funds.
Any questions? Right, seeing none, roll call please Laura.
Counselor Thorpe. Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
And Counselor Shara.
Yes. Okay, that moves forward, we're at uh twenty one point two two six F Y twenty two C I P in order to appropriate one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from parking receipts reserved for parking projects. Ordered that pursuant to the F Y twenty two to F Y twenty six capital improvement program, that one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars be appropriated from the receipts reserved for appropriation parking to fund the following projects. Replace uh twenty eleven flatbed truck for parking maintenance, sixty thousand dollars. E J Gear Garage Repairs, twenty five thousand dollars. Replace the twenty fifteen Nissan Leaf for parking enforcement, thirty thousand dollars.
Do a positive recommendation?
Counselor Quinlan, seconded by Counselor LaBarge. Hmm, Mayor Narcoitz?
Yeah, these are just, these are three projects that are obviously going to be paid for out of parking receipts. Um, the garage maintenance is is on on recurring uh funding stream and it's, you know, the garage is a um, maintenance project in progress forever, because it's a, it's a moving, flexing structure, and so there's sort of like maintenance that's always has to happen. Um, looking at joints, inspecting joints, sealing joints, um, uh, as well as, you know, uh, the the exterior of the building and the, obviously, the exposed areas, um elevators, all the other pieces up at lighting, so that's ongoing. Um, you know, our fleet of Leafs, we um, you know, those have a, have a sort of a battery lifespan and uh uh, and a sort of, so we we have a pro- process where we try to let them go to sort of out to the edge of that seven years. Um, and then we trade in uh to get um newer vehicles. And so you'll see in future years, there's another Leaf, I think, that's turning seven or eight years old, that will also be scheduled for a replacement. Um, just given the battery life, uh, and um, and so that's been the strategy that we've used with those electric vehicles.
Any questions? Counselor Quinlan.
Do, do we uh then sell those vehicles?
Typically, it's a trade-in situation where we, we we try to do a trade-in. Um, and so um, it's just sort of a, I don't know, kind of a cost benefit analysis of knowing the bet, you know, if you had to replace the battery in one of those things, um, that um, that better to sort of, you know, I think it's often why sometimes people suggest leasing electric vehicles, just because, you know, um, because of the technology and the batteries and and, you know, after a four or five year lease, um, you know, then you're uh, then the whole issue about battery life and replacing a battery and all that, so yeah, so I think we do uh trade them in. I don't know what they go for. I don't know what the resale is on them, but um, but that's, that's uh, that's the process.
Thank you.
And why don't we lease them then?
That's a good question. Um, I guess I don't know. That's a really good question. I mean, we've generally, um, you know, I know we 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 did have some leases originally with um, um, the um ambulances, you know, we were leasing ambulance just for a while. And um, and I I just, I think it was not a, um, you know, leases carry their own issues in terms of, you know, um, maintenance and dam- potential damage and things like that, so um, you know, I can, I can ask whether Chris has ever looked into that. Um, but it's possibly something to think about in the future. I I don't know what the um, what the procurement requirements are around a lease. And um, but yeah, certainly something, I know we typically don't lease these, uh, we've gotten away from leasing. Like, I only have the ambulance example in my head. Um, but I can, you know, ask about that. Well, I I say that, this is the last capital plan you'll ever get from me, but uh somebody who can ask the question, or I can, I can certainly push it back to David and to Chris and see whether they've explored that for these vehicles.
Thanks, appreciate it. Counselor Jarrett?
Um, so I have a neighbor who has a leaf and I did some research for him on replacing the batteries. And if you go to the dealer, they're gonna charge you fifteen thousand dollars for a new battery. But um, there are uh independent repair shops, uh, one at least in Massachusetts, that will replace them for uh about five thousand dollars. Um, and I don't know whether that's worth it, like in terms of the replacement, because it doesn't fix the other parts to the car that might be going wrong. But uh, just something to uh make sure that people know is available and and have considered.
Definitely.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, uh, roll call please Laura.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward with positive recommendation and we're up to twenty one point two two seven F Y twenty two C I P in order to appropriate two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from sale of land R R A account for N P S projects. Ordered that pursuant to the F Y twenty two two, F Y twenty twenty six capital improvement program, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars be appropriated from the receipts reserved for appropriation, sale of land account proceeds from the sale of the South Street School to the following projects. North Hampton Public Schools N H S, replace theater fire curtain for fifty thousand dollars. North Hampton Public Schools Leeds, replace handicap lift in cafeteria, a hundred thousand dollars. North Hampton Public Schools Leeds Floor Replacement, sixty five thousand dollars.
Make a positive recommendation to full city council.
Seconded.
Counselor LaBarge has made the motion, Counselor Quinlan has seconded it, Mayor Narcoitz.
So these are a series of school projects um that we're going to use the proceeds from the sale of a former school, um, which has been sort of the policy that I've used when we've surplus buildings. I think you'll see one later. That's a proceeds from the water department being reinvested in water, uh, the water division or the Water Enterprise Fund, rather. Um, so these are just three projects that um, that are uh capital in nature and uh proceeds from the sale of real estate can only be used for uh capital projects. Uh, so we typically, in the case of these older school buildings, we we push the funds back uh to um, to the schools. So that's, that's why we're using these funds to cover these projects.
Questions?
And one of the things we've been doing with the capital plan over time is slowly trying to catch up on deferred maintenance in our schools. We did a lot of work at Ryan Road, you know, just like basic stuff, like replacing, you know, the cafeteria floor and the gym floor and, you know, renovating ancient cafeterias. And so, um, you know, we're sort of slowly working through a pretty long list of, um, so you'll sort of see some common themes, um, including, you know, cafeteria equipment and, um, you know, things like that. So um, that's a part of a uh, one of the reasons why the capital program is so important. Um, just because, you know, you, you need to keep investing in these things. Um, and, you know, these are, these are the cafeterias that feed our children and and that hundreds and hundreds of people go in and out of every day. So um, so this just, you know, part of the, part of maintaining the the working infrastructure of the service delivery that we do in city and city and schools.
Counselor Nash.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Mayor, so I, maybe, maybe I missed something, but a during my time on council, I'm not sure we've spent any money out of this account before. It's just striking me as kind of new. And that, um, but also.
We actually have, you uh, you actually have, um, because we we spent, um, when we sold, um, uh, when we sold Fiker School to um, uh, to Nanituck, um, we used that to actually pay for uh the roof replacements um at a couple of our schools. I think uh Jack's uh Jackson and Bridge, um, when we sold, well, Florence Grammar might have been before your time, but when we sold Florence Grammar, we also used the proceeds um to go towards school projects as well.
Okay, alright, I might have missed it, but I, I'm just curious as to, um, you know, South Street School, I, we, we sold that probably a decade ago or more or?
No, no, we just sold it recently. You know, we leased it decades ago uh to the Community Music Center, um, you know, for a dollar a year and they put millions and millions of dollars into it. And so uh we eventually surplus'd it and um, and they bought it outright. Um, and so um, so that's, that's what, the sale just occurred recently in the last year or two, I think, yeah.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, roll call please Laura, a positive recommendation.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward with positive recommendation and we are at twenty one point two two eight F Y twenty two C I P. Ninety four thousand five hundred and seventy five dollars from sale of land R R A account for Florence Fields Recreation Area. Ordered that pursuant to the F Y twenty twenty two F Y twenty twenty six capital improvement program, nine, ninety four thousand five hundred and seventy five dollars be appropriated from the receipts reserved for appropriation. Field of Land Account Proceeds From The Sale Of Various Lots By The Planning Department For Stage Two Of The Development Of The Florence Fields Recreation Area.
Move a positive recommendation to full city council?
Motion made by Counselor Quinlan, seconded by Counselor Thorpe, Mayor Narcoitz.
So this is uh, again, another use of some of these sale of land. Um, you often when Wayne brings, uh Wayne Feiden brings forward some of um his um, often open space acquisitions or or um agricultural acquisitions, there's typically, you know, a small lot that's involved that gets sold for building a house or, you know, um, things like that. So um, these, these are some funds from those types of sales. Um, and we're um trying to u- utilize it to um, to finish some of the unfinished pieces of Florence Fields. Um, particularly the playground, um, there was an initial playground that was built. Um, we applied uh for park grants from the state, um, which I think we got about four or five park grants for for Florence Fields. So I guess they kind of reached a point where they said, yeah, I think we've given you enough park grants for for Florence Fields, so we we were unsuccessful. Uh, but this is really to finish off um more of that playground structure. And I know they've also got some C P A monies that they're gonna put towards it. And they've also, they've got other projects that they've been privately fundraising for as well. Um, to kind of finish out more to sort of amenities for people, for kids to have, you know, playtime. Um, including, you know, when their big brother or sister is playing soccer or baseball. Um, and then also, you know, place for picnicking and things like that. So um, so that's what this will help uh finally get over the finish line for Parks and Rec at at our beautiful Florence Fields.
Exciting, Counselor LaBarge, then Counselor Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, Mayor, what land was bought that we're using that account from this project?
Um, I will have to, um, I must confess, I don't have the, that, I have a lot of, I have a lot of information in my brain, a lot of uh, and useless information, but I don't, I don't have that information, um, but I can certainly get it from Mr. Feiden. Um, uh, and again, like, I know even in your ward, you know, on Glendale Road or or um, or in conjunction with other, you know, development pro- par- uh processes on Burt's Pit and other areas like that, where um even Florence Fields, we sold some land um, uh, uh as part of that deal. Um, so I can try to find out what the, what sales those represent. I just don't have them at my fingertips tonight, but I can certainly find that out.
Right, would it be like one land or are we talking? Right, would it be like one land or are we talking?
Actually, um, breaking news, uh, um, I just got uh, through mental telepathy or the text from Mr. Feiden, it was Burt's Pit by Woods Road. So um, it was sale of those parcels, uh, Burt's Pit by Woods Road.
I thought so because we got Habitat going in and Emerson Way, that contractor had bought property there. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Oh, sorry, Counselor Mayory, I apologize.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just really thrilled about this. I'm just personally, that's, that's a place that my family goes, you know, several times a week. And it is kind of a sore, you know, thumb, the, the kind of unfinished dream there. It's a fabulous place, so I'm really grateful for that. I'm just curious about, actually two questions. One is, when do you think uh, construction will be able to begin there? Just uh, so I can tell residents when they ask me. And I'm just curious about the land, um, that we're talking about that land, Past Crimson and Clover, is that, is that part of, um, is that still city? Land, uh, Cords Look Park, if that makes any sense?
Um, that one I'd have to check on.
That's okay, I, I, I was just curious if it was preserved or if that was gonna?
I mean, most, pretty much every piece of that land is, is either preserved or obviously we're leasing uh, to, to grow food for the community gardens.
Right.
And, and then obviously the recreation land. Um, I think the only land that became building lots were the ones right on the street, like right, right, right along there. Um, I don't, I guess maybe probably a good question to talk to Mr. Feiden about if you can point it out on a map which land you're talking about. I'm sure he can let you know, so.
Yeah, thank you.
I think, I know Anne Marie is, is um, you know, itching to get started on all this stuff and, and probably has her playground equipment catalogs out and um, I know she's working on some other projects there. Um, I know they're getting ready to do the, the um, from a previous capital plan, the, the, the netting for the baseball fields. Many builds have been, uh, have been taken out by the fly balls there. So um, they're, they're, they're putting up some netting and I know they've got some other, but, so I know she wants to get this going like right away to hopefully get it in place this year.
That's great. I, uh, residents actually regularly ask me about that. So I've got a lot of good news coming out of Ward Seven uh, tonight. Thank you.
We, we aim to please the residents of Ward Seven, definitely.
Alright.
Don't want to mess with us though, yeah.
Any further comments or threats? Okay. Roll call please on a positive recommendation.
Counselor, Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
And Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward. We're up to twenty one point two two nine FY twenty two. In order to appropriate four hundred and twenty four thousand dollars from sale of land RRA account for water line replacement. Ordered that pursuant to FY twenty twenty two FY twenty two six capital improvement program, four hundred and twenty four thousand dollars be appropriated from the receipts reserved for appropriation, sale of land account proceeds from the sale of the Prospect Street Water Department Building for the replacement of water lines throughout the city.
Yep, make a positive resi- reservation to um, city council, excuse me.
Don't worry. Motion made by Counselor Barge and seconded by?
Second it.
Counselor Quinlan. Oh, you're muted.
Recurring theme tonight where we're taking money from sale of land and, and, and pushing right back into capital projects. Uh, this of course was the water department building on Prospect, um, that was uh, uh, purchased by congregation Benai Israel. And um, and so this will go toward water line replacement, which is always a, a recurring issue in the capital plan when we've got some big um, projects uh, planned uh, already. We've got water main work happening on Damon Road in conjunction with the big uh, construction project that's happening there, um, Atwood Drive, Hatfield, North King, Winter Street. Um, we've got major water line replacements uh, happening there, uh, which are, you know, in excess of three million dollars. So this will help uh, support some of those projects.
Any questions? Seeing none, roll call please Laura.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge. Counselor Sh- Quinlan.
Yes.
And Counselor Shara.
Yes. That was sort of a positive recommendation and we're up to twenty one point two three zero in order to reprogram funds to Academy of Music Fire Suppression and Leeds Elementary Parking Lot Repaving. Ordered that the following counts with surplus funds be reprogrammed and added to the Academy of Music Fire Suppression System Project. Academy of Music Stage Lighting, five thousand three hundred and forty dollars, municipal building elevator, three thousand two hundred and one dollars and eighty eight cents. Fire Station Energy Management System, twelve thousand three hundred and fifty two dollars and thirty cents. The following account with surplus funds be reprogrammed and added to Leeds Elementary School Parking Lot Paving, Repaving Project. Leeds Chimney Repairs, six thousand eight hundred and nine dollars and fifty cents.
Move a positive recommendation, please.
Questions made by Counselor Quinlan, seconded by Counselor LaBarge, Mayor Nerkoits.
So this is another thing that often happens with capital projects. Um, uh, obviously you sometimes have projects that come in a little less than anticipated. So you have tailings left over. Um, and then you have other ones that exceed, um, you know, what, what was projected. So here we're just taking some tailings from you know, three separate projects and, and moving them um, into one ongoing project. Uh, in this case, the uh, Academy of Music Fire Suppression System Project. Um, and then obviously taking some leftover uh, funds from the chimney repair um, uh, project at Leeds and, and helping to fill a shortfall with the uh, parking lot repaving project. You'll note we're doing a lot of work in the Academy of Music. Um, you know, there's uh, uh, they've been very active in trying to secure grants. Um, we've been, we've been funding a lot of projects and particularly this year, um, with um, you know, the theater dark because of COVID and um, we've really been working on some, some important, I think really important safety upgrades. Um, the fire suppression system is a big one because, you know, it's a building that doesn't have a sprinkler and didn't heretofore have a sprinkler system in it, um, which posed a number of challenges for them, um, in terms of some of the kinds of shows they can have there. Um, and some of the protocols that they had to follow. We're doing work with them on, on restroom upgrades. Um, I think you, the fire curtain is another project in this one. So we're, um, it's obviously sad to see the Academy of Music dark, um, during the pandemic, but we're, but we're trying to, um, we're trying to uh, tackle some of these important projects uh, that need to be done and during this time when there aren't shows currently scheduled.
Questions? Seeing none, roll call please Laura on a positive recommendation.
Counselor LaBarge. Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward and we're at twenty one point two three four in order to accept DA Sullivan, ten thousand dollars gift to fund public art projects. Ordered that the North Hampton City Council gratefully accepts the donation of ten thousand dollars, a gift to the city of North Hampton from DA Sullivan and Sons Inc. In accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty Four, Section Fifty Three A, approves using, using the gifted funds to fund public art projects under the direction of the North Hampton Arts and Culture Department.
Move a grateful and positive recommendation, please.
I can.
Questions made by Counselor Quinlan, seconded by Counselor Thorpe. Mayor Nerkoits.
Yeah, so um, Mark Sullivan uh, approached the city several years ago and said that, you know, his, his family business DA Sullivan and Sons was interested in, in making some recurring gifts to the city every year to try to fund some, you know, just needs that a capital project needs that we um, thought were important. And um, over time, we've used them for, you know, well, if you were in council chambers, I could point to the new council desks that you're all would be sitting at, which were now funded uh, by Mark, although, you know, he, he had to sit in those old desks as a planning board member. So that may have played into his uh, his, his desire to have them replaced. Uh, but you know, help fund playground projects at schools, um, help fund accessible, you know, the accessible uh, water fountain in the park. You know, during the, most recently during the pandemic, helped, helped underwrite our technology lending program. And, and this is actually a project that um, uh, Brian Foot's been working on. Um, you know, obviously he's been doing lots of public art and, you know, there's a call out now for artists to do the um, you know, more of the certain utility boxes and he's done murals and he's done other things. But um, we've been chatting with PDTA about an idea that he has to actually do public art at bus stops at the, you know, bus shelters. Um, a lot of cities are doing that. So um, so it just, the, it was a perfect convergence of my having met with Brian to talk about that and then Mark calling. And also one of Mark's daughters is an art student, an art major. So he's like, how can I not fund public art? So um, so that's why this year the DA Sullivan um, uh, is graciously giving us this gift and it's uh, to be dedicated to uh, public art projects that Brian Foot will be executing uh, later on this year.
There, um, their generosity is just astounding and um, I'm really excited about this use. This is really lovely. Counselor LaBarge.
Yes, I have to echo Counselor President. You just said, it seems like every year they're coming and donating money to different areas in our community. And it is so welcomed in our hearts and appreciated for what that company does and that family.
Great.
Okay. Uh, seeing no other comments. Uh, roll call please on a positive recommendation Laura.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward with positive recommendation and we're at twenty one point two three five in order to appropriate marijuana community impact fee, two million point six, two point six million dollars to various projects. Ordered that two million, six hundred and forty thousand dollars be appropriated from the marijuana community impact fee stabilization fund to the following accounts. One million, six hundred and ten thousand dollars to the community resilience hub acquisition and development. One million to Pleasant Street Roadway and streetscape improvements from Hockenham Road to the Con Street Roundabout. Fifteen thousand dollars to accessible bus stop design and construction at Thirty Four Bridge Street and fifteen thousand dollars to Valley Bike Share Installation at Eighty One Con Street Salvo House.
Move a positive recommendation, please.
What can you?
Questions made by Counselor Quinlan, seconded by Counselor Thorpe, Mayor Nerkoits. You're muted.
Uh, um, so um, uh, the, the council knows, I, I think we talked about it at the um, at the January meeting that um, that uh, I, I made a sort of a policy decision regarding our um, the post-community agreements with um, with folks in the cannabis industry in North Hampton. Um, heretofore, we had been collecting um, a mitigation fee, uh, a three percent mitigation fee uh, from them and um, and using it to fund projects in and around and near um, these facilities. Uh, we obviously have moved away from that. We still have the ability to collect the mitigation fund. But uh, for a number of policy reasons and I think for uh, equ- social equity reasons, um, I made the decision to drop the, drop the, drop the requirement that it just be paid um, on an ongoing basis. Um, and we still retain the ability uh, to be able to collect it from an individual um, dispensary or operator if there was a fund. So over time, we've, um, we've been um, devoting these funds to key projects um, in and around uh, the um, the, the area where the facilities um, operate. Um, so uh, a lot of work has happened in and around uh, Con Street, you know, repaving of Con Street, all the side streets, uh, crosswalks, crosswalk beacons. Uh, lots of different projects are related to infrastructure there. And um, the other big projects that have been happening at the time have also been stuff on Pleasant Street where, you know, we've been, we've sort of undergone this major revisioning of Pleasant Street. Um, and actually Neta helped fund some of the early, um, uh, some of the early visioning uh, processes that went on with that. Um, and we've been doing Pleasant Street in segments. Um, and so um, one piece of this uh, funding is going to help us finish the final piece of the, of the Pleasant Street corridor uh, uh, sort of revamping. So, you know, think of the things we've done already on Pleasant Street, you know, the narrowing of the streets, the street trees, the bicycle lanes. And um, and, and just an improved uh, streetscape and, and pavement. So that piece of this project, um, which, you know, goes right by Neta would be to fund that. Um, another project um, uh, that Neta had been, I'm hoping we would be able to accomplish is getting a Valley Bike Share Station somewhere down um, on Con Street. Um, we were not able to locate it in front of um, uh, directly across from uh, uh, them, um, just because of the property boundary issues. But um, actually I think this is going to be great because we're going to put it pretty close at Salvo House. So it's going to serve a dual role of having, you know, providing alternative transportation, not only for folks who may want to go to and from uh, Neta, but also residents of Salvo House will have access. Um, the other project um, is a, um, this is the bus stop um, in front of the Talbot's Plaza, which is actually where um, one of our other operators is located, um, Jack's uh, recreational cannabis incorporated, um, formerly Colonial Cannabis, now called Jack's. Um, and so there's a, currently a, a stop there, um, but it's not um, handicapped accessible. And we're doing a lot of other work on uh, on Pleasant Street. Um, and I know uh, I talked to Jack, he really is named Jack, uh, Jack Carney, and uh, he was excited to have some of these funds um, uh, go toward that project. And then the big one on here, um, uh, in terms of how I want to allocate these funds um, is the, is the Community uh, Resilience Hub project that uh, we've been working on um, for several years. Um, and have been assembling grants and have been assembling, um, uh, you know, doing a lot of design work, doing a lot of um, visioning work, um, forging partnerships with other stakeholders who are interested in, in being part of this project. And most importantly is trying to figure out how would we pay for um, the actual space to, to acquire some, some space for it to be this hub, um, and then to do any kinds of renovations that would have to happen. So um, so this is essentially, these funds are the remaining funds um, from that period when we were collecting these mitigation funds um, in advance. So I want to get them out into the community and get them um, uh, doing um, important uh, work in some, some cases continuing the transportation and traffic uh, mitigation work. But I think the, the resilience hub project is um, is sort of critical on so many levels for our downtown and for our local economy and for, and for all the people that live in and around downtown. Those at risk, um, those at risk during uh, climate crises. And um, so again, I know, I know Neta is really excited to see some of these, these funds be used toward that project. And um, so I'm, I'm asking for the authority to uh, move this money into our Community Resilience Hub account with other funds that we're, we're continuing to assemble, um, that could be used to um, make the, the important acquisition of, of an ultimate, you know, the end, end site when we can identify that for the resilience hub. So that's what this order is all about. Um, again, uh, I've tried to stress this to people, the mitigation, we still have the option of collecting um, mitigation. And again, the mitigation is about mitigating the impacts uh, to the city of the operation of the facility. Um, I know um, folks have talked about some of the other um, goals of the cannabis uh, law. Obviously, the um, issues around uh, communities that have been disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs. There's certainly uh, part of the state tax funding is, a, a big chunk of that is allocated to that. And um, and you know, the city's been trying to work toward lowering barriers uh, to, to access to the industry, including getting rid of the mitigation fee um, as a major barrier. And um, and we're And and we're going to continue to work on that. I just did a just did an exciting groundbreaking up in. Up at Bay State. At the old Yankee Hill Manufacturing Company. And it's going to be a, it's actually one of our, it's our first empowerment application for cannabis. A major part of their business model is. Is trying to address those impacts and to hire and get folks involved in their business. Who who are from communities that have been disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs. And so you know, we're we remain committed to that. And I actually think that the resilience hub in its own way is 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 an effort to try to. Work toward helping those of are at least among us that have been disadvantaged in so many ways. And and need the kind of services that we can't quite provide now with the facilities that we have, so. So that's that's what this order is about and. And I would respectfully ask for your approval.
Thank you. I think those are all excellent uses of that that fund, particularly resilience hub. I think is. One of the most, if not the most important and innovative undertaking that I've seen the city take up in my time. And. You know, we heard a really strong endorsement for it from this week from the North Hampton Policing Review Commission. And I actually think that many of their recommendations will be. Will be addressed with the hubs, even the ones that they didn't kind of call out specifically for the resilience hub. But you know, including their their call for a central place where people can access services. So I think this is just a spectacular use of these funds. Counselor Labarge, should I see your hand?
Yes, thank you. You probably all received that email. First time I've met her, Ya Ping. And it was very interesting about the order to appropriate the marijuana community impact fee. And I'm not going to read it all, but she says, I think it would be wonderful if counselors could raise the issue. Of accountability to people of color harmed by the war on drugs. In decisions related to the marijuana community impact be usage tonight. As it seems not equitable for money from the marijuana community impact be. To go to projects that are not accountable to black and brown individuals in communities. Who have been harmed by the war on drugs. And she's aware that the Community Resilience Hub intends to benefit people of color and poor people. But if the people of color and poor people are not included in decision making roles. Of the Community Resilience Hub, it is likely the good intentions will not have the impact desired. So. You know, she had some good thoughts here about even with the community impact fee. About also on the wars on drugs and we heard the mayor talk about that tonight. But they're also, she's also suggesting that. That would that community impact be be guided also by a border black and brown residents. Who have been impacted by criminalization slash racist drug policy. Just like and she used as an example, Evanston, Illinois has taken those steps and it has become very successful. So I just want to read that and I think the mayor is on track with doing this, so I thank you, Mayor.
Oh, I I just, the only thing I wanted to say is, you know, this is the, this is sort of the brick and mortar piece of the resilience hub. And there's obviously going to be a lot of work. I actually have a little bit of exciting news. One of our. Major partners in the project, Community Action of the Pioneer Valley. Just got a grant from the Beverage Foundation and they're intending to hire a. A resilience hub community organizer, basically, who's going to be a staff person who's going to go out into the community. And try to or you know, work with people, including the people you're describing around. Around figuring out the needs that this hub can serve. And so that's that's, you know, this is, this is, this is for the brick and mortar piece of it. The program programming piece of it is a whole other process. That will happen, working with stakeholders, working with community members. And again, you know, Community Actions making the commitment, again, they're going to be putting out a. I think they're going to be putting out a job posting shortly for to hire an actual community organizer. Just around this resilience hub concept for that very reason.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Counselor Dwight.
It's also rather important to note that there will be no further impact fee revenues. So that there wouldn't be a decision rendering. The distribution of that because as the mayor said. We are the only community in the state that discontinued that and to be perfectly honest, the establishment of that fee was. Well, I'll be generous in calling in excess of caution. In order to make the introduction of of legal marijuana sales in the state more palatable for a number of communities, but point in fact. It was usury. We were, we, no other business enterprise in the state. Is required to provide an impact fee unless, of course, for instance. If they have, if they force issues around traffic and other stuff like that, that would be, that would. Come at the city's expense. It's not. We are entitled to ask for monies in that case and we still will continue to be, but. In this case, there's no more blanket. Fee that will be asked of any potential further applicants, so there will be no money to oversee in that respect.
And there's a couple of Supreme Judicial Court cases that are that are brewing right now and you know. The that that may also have some impacts. It was a fascinating argument and the justices were a little, just a little bit gobsmacked. About the fee and how the fees were being charged in different communities and. And so interesting. So yeah, anyway, so I think North Hampton has always been out ahead on this industry and this issue, and so I'm proud that we're. You know, we were the first to eliminate this fee and so and you are correct, Counselor, there there are no more fees coming in. All of our host community agreements have been amended. We're not collecting the fees anymore upfront. And and so this would be basically using the fees from here to fore and and spending them for these projects.
Counselor Nash, then Counselor Jarrett.
Think I saw Counselor Thorpe also raise his hand a little bit. So I defer to him if he wants.
And I can't see him. All right, shall I go to Counselor Thorpe first, then Counselor Jarrett?
Thank you very much. And I just want to say thank you to Counselor Labarge and to you, Counselor, Counsel President Shear for for your. For your comments and I echo those sentiments. I do want to let the council know, which I've already done before, but I want to reiterate that I am a member of the resilience hub committee. I have no financial interest in this and I can vote on this objectively. And I also want to say that I know that the mayor has been working very hard to get this going and I appreciate his efforts and I appreciate Community Action. Coming forward as well to help out with this, so thank you.
Yeah. So Counselor Nash.
Yeah, I I just want to say this might be my favorite financial order of all time. You know, it it at the center of it is the resilience hub. It's, you know, us putting our values on the line. We've been working on this, you know, thanks to the mayor's leadership around this for several years now, you know, that. The convergence of the recommendations that came from the Policing Review Commission. And you know, here we are lining up with, you know, putting aside money for the 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 capital, the the money to. Create the bricks and mortars for this thing to be possible. It it it's really quite remarkable. And and as the Ward Three City Counselor, I really appreciate the the equity pieces with the other three items on this. One having to do with the with the with the Valley Bike Share at Salvo House. I think that's a terrific location. I think it's, you know, that that it's it's part of our our public housing and and we're bringing to them, you know. One of our wonderful amenities in this community and it's going to be right there, front and center. That we're going to complete Pleasant Street. That that the whole rebuild of Pleasant Street has been really. It it it's really changed that the whole neighborhood. And that that the fact that Neta, their monies all along in little increments have made that whole transition possible. And then the last one with that bus stop. That, you know, that's related to, you know, improving the pickup drop off over at Bridge Street School. And it's to put a more useful bus stop for folks who who are coming over from UMass. Who are coming over from UMass and need to get off downtown. It's a perfect place for a bus stop. It's paired up with the bus stop directly across the street at the post office. So I I can't like this fin financial order enough and. I will vote on it twice if we want to tonight. Thank you.
All right, two thumbs up from Counselor Nash.
I'd like the word three parts of it especially, so.
Counselor Jarrett.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm also pleased to see the money going toward all of these items. But I wanted to to ask a little bit about the justification of spending. So you've stated that that there haven't been necessarily any major impacts. So I just want to make sure, you know, how you're justifying spending this on the community resilient hubs and that's not because I don't love it or want to. See it happen. I want to see it happen, but because if it's not justifiable, is there any risk in then spending it in this way?
So I've I've tried to do a lot of work to to, you know, make sure that I understand that and talk to the city solicitor about it and. And I've also taken the step of, because really the funds were were given to us, they were paid to us. And and you know, I've tried to because I've wanted to make sure that we're hewing to what the use of the funds are for. But but I've also been in close contact with the two two retailers who've paid the the fees and particularly. The Community Resilience Hub, which is largely coming from the Neta funds and I've talked to the folks at Neta. Interestingly. I'm not sure she's on the committee, but she's on the Ward Three Neighborhood Association Board and she's on the, you know, the downtown economic, I think she chairs the downtown economic. Committee. Leslie Laurie, who's who's the community representative for for Neta and they are very supportive of this project, so I don't think we're in any legal jeopardy. Doing it and I just feel that it's, this is on just so many levels, a critical project for for downtown. And and obviously downtown and and you know, has has borne the brunt of traffic and all the other. Issues related to these facilities being located there. So and. So I'm, I guess I'm probably stretching a little bit, but I just, I'm, I think it's a, I think it's an important stretch and I think this is such a, you know, once in a generation project. That that we we need to just go for it and and but again, I have talked with the folks at Neta and as well, well, primarily Neta. And there's there's sort of not going to be any objection from them, that's for sure. So I feel quite confident in doing this.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure. So it's very exciting. So some getting to some of the points that Counselor Labarge brought up. Thinking about like accountability to those who use the services, so it's one of the policing review commission's recommendations. So can you describe kind of how the Community Resilience Hub? Will be accountable? And if if there's a, if that's part of. Like in terms of the decision making, in terms of, you know, how. Working with the folks who will be using it, which, you know, is is a number of people, right? It's it's the, it's it's homeless folks, it's people experiencing acute chronic stress and then it's also going to be. A broader range of folks during emergencies, but it, could you talk to that, speak to that?
I can, I can, I can try. I mean, obviously, this is more, this is more the bricks and mortar, the, you know, the the. The ware piece and and. I I mean, I, we've had an, we've had an ongoing group that's been talking about it conceptually. But as we move closer to this. You know, that's one of the reasons why. Community Action is taking the step of of hiring a community organizer because I think they want to start beginning to think about like, what is going to be the structure for this? Who are the other, who are the other, you know, stakeholder agencies that may want to be involved in it? As a sort of a central hub for for all these various, you know, serving community needs. And so I, the honest answer is, I don't think that that those pieces haven't been worked out yet. But they're definitely part of what the process will be to work it out. And that's the stuff to come. You know, I'm, I'm mostly now working on just trying to find, you know, the ware. And and the city trying to provide that. But and and then the rest of this will be part of that process that's going to have to take place, you know, once we find it. You know, working with stakeholders, working with community members and and developing what that what that process will be. But certainly, you know, you know, all the, all the things that we've been talking about in terms of, you know, peer led services and. And and those other pieces are certainly all part of that mix. So I can't really give you a, I can't hand you a mission statement and a and a, you know, description of an advisory board because all of that stuff is still. Floating around and is yet to be developed. So my focus right now is just trying to, is just trying to pull together the funds and you know, we've got. These funds, we're going to have some community development block grant funding. We've got some private grant funding. I've got, we've had some gifts. I've, I'm, I'm working on a major gift toward this project that I'm hoping to be able to make an announcement about. In the next couple of weeks, so I'm basically trying to assemble the capital money. But that is, none of that, none of those things, none of those decisions have been made. But that'll surely be part of the the sort of the the designing, the operational aspects of of the hub.
Yeah, great. Well, thank, thank you for that. I'm also wondering if the council could have an up, like a presentation on the Community Resilience Hub. Or at least the progress, you know, I've looked through all the information on the website and and the report, there's a sixty five page report that's from last June. Which is great, but. I wonder if Director Fiden or another who's who's working on it would be able to give a brief presentation of, you know, here's where we're at, here's. What's what, what's next to do? So just a request.
Definitely. Yeah, definitely. No, that that that. That would be, that would be timely and and I'm actually hoping, you know, we're we're in the middle of a fairly intense. Site selection process right now and looking at various sites and so. Maybe it'll be in conjunction with bringing something forward around that as well. You know, what the next steps are, but certainly I can do that. I mean, we've been continuing to work. With with a, you know, sort of a, sort of a group of of stakeholders and other agencies that are interested in how they can be part of this. Obviously, you've read recently about Mana really wanting to be part of it. They've taken, they've taken over. The management of the of the lockers that we purchased, which eventually will will live at the resilience hub. But we can certainly do that and have have Wayne commit.
Great, thank you. And I have one more question. So the bus stop on Bridge Street is great. Will the bus stops on Pleasant and Con Street also see improvements? I know when I've ridden the P V T A, the Holyoke, I see many people get on and off near Neta more than before Neta was there. And also thinking about the how, you know, those people are paying a fair, but the P V T A incurs costs beyond the fares that it collects. And I wonder if a contribution to the P V T A would be appropriate and might be an impact. I know it sounds like. You know, there isn't a plan to collect impact fees, but there's still that option. And part of me wants to to push back a little on the the sense. And I know this might be difficult because. There's, you know, there's, there's some of the folks operating marijuana, the marijuana. Shops are very large corporations and that are, I, it appears making quite a bit of money. On it and then there's others who are really just trying to get started. And the equity applicants that, you know, we don't want to burden. And I maybe we can't decide, okay, we're going to charge the three percent fee to these corporations and not to others. I don't know if we have that kind of ability. I don't know if we have that kind of ability. But just thinking about, especially if there are identified impacts. Just factoring that in as well.
I don't know about those specific bus stops. I can certainly look into it. I mean, PVTA generally, you know, maintains the infrastructure. We often will work on the accessibility issues in and around them. I can certainly, if they were on Pleasant Street, I'm surprised that they weren't upgraded as part of the recent. But I don't know where they are on Pleasant Street. So, because I know we did a lot of work around accessibility and, you know, curb cuts and and bump outs and and all those other things on Pleasant Street. So I don't know about that specific one. And and, you know, the impact fee thing is is very squishy. And as I said, it's currently subject of litigation in multiple communities. And there's some cases at the Supreme Judicial Court about it. So there might be some more clarity around that. So and again, I don't, I don't, at this point, I I don't have a clear reading on it. I think we'll maybe get a clearer reading on it when those cases are resolved and the legislature is being urged, actually. There's, there's bills filed to try to get the legislature to more clearly delineate this whole area. Because it's a little bit, it's sort of been vague. And the commission has felt it doesn't have the authority in this case to to basically, they've said they don't have the authority to police host community agreements. The legislature has said, yes, you do have the authority. And it's just sort of been this muddle. And so now things are being taken to court. So I think that's going to clear through the muddle quickly, I hope. So so I don't have a clear answer for you on that. But I I understand, I understand the concern. And it's, you know, it's one of the reasons why, you know, we, I think we've, we've, I think North Hampton has done a good job of not putting up excessive barriers, including, you know, our zoning processes. And we don't charge big licensing fees or any kinds of other local fees that many communities do. And I think it's the reason why we've had so many people wanting to locate here as well. So, yeah.
Great, thank you.
And we are, and I mean, again, we are getting a three percent sales tax as well. So with, I mean, we're not giving up the three percent sales tax. That's still a major new revenue source. And of course, the state is getting, you know, twenty percent or seventeen percent. So so that does continue to be one way that we're collecting revenue from the largest, you know, the largest retailers. In this case, Net, although now, you know, we, we had our fourth retailer just open on King Street a couple of weeks ago. Turning Leaf, which, you know, is another, so now we're up to four. So it'll be interesting to see how this, how the industry shakes out in terms of how much market share groups like Neta will, you know, can continue to to command as more and more are opening.
Counselor Mayore, then Counselor Nash. You're muted, Counselor Mayore.
See if my internet will hold out. So, yeah, I wanted to first thank you, Mayor, you know, just kind of for this whole immersion of the cannabis industry being a champion of equity. I remember you pointing out to me that equity issues, for example, with delivery services in cannabis. And that was really enlightening. I appreciate that. And I, I really want to echo what Counselor Garrett was saying about, you know, but really vetting this in the community. I also want to thank actually Counselor Thorpe for serving, serving on this. There's so many great players. I went back and looked at the report more carefully. And so many great players involved in this. It's such an excited, exciting, you know, innovative service model for someone who's worked in so- social services. It's kind of a dream. So I, I think there's so much promise here. And I just want it not to be derailed by making kind of same old mistakes that sometimes get made when designing these kinds of big projects. I saw on the, you know, page fifty-nine, the working group agreed that it would be critical to bring the intended hub users into the discussion of creating an inclusive and dignified space. But I think we need more than having them be part of the discussion. I think they need to be part of the decision making. So I'm really going to be interested in the feedback loop between hub users and service partners. And if there's going to be an advisory board that has vulnerable communities and impacted communities on it. So I, I'm, I, I really hope that this process is very public and with lots of time for input so that we can create the best service possible with such an investment.
Counselor Nash.
Yeah, real quick, I'm really interested in learning from more from Counselor Jarrett about issues with possible bus stops on Pleasant Street. And because now is absolutely the time to look at that. And ready to jump in and and advocate for more effective play, you know. Yeah, more effective bus stops. So let's talk.
Counselor Dwight.
Just a little concerning, we're straying a little far from the agenda item. And it makes me feel real uncomfortable. So I I wish we would keep to the bricks and mortar allocation of these funds now. And have the larger, more expansive conversations as an agenda item.
Good, good note. Okay, any other questions? A roll call, please, and positive recommendation, Laura.
Counselor Shara. Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge. And Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Okay, then move forward. And we are at our last one. This is twenty-one point two three seven, in order to appropriate free cash, four hundred thousand dollars to animal control facility. Order that the sum of four hundred thousand dollars be appropriated from the FY twenty twenty-one general fund, undesigned fund balance free cash to be added to the appropriation for the construction of an animal control facility by Central Services, originally funded in the FY twenty eighteen, FY twenty twenty-two capital improvement program.
Move a positive recommendation, please.
Give me a second. Second by Counselor Thorpe, Mayor Norquits.
Okay, so where to begin the story of the, of the the endless quest for an animal control facility? So just a little bit of the backstory. You know, the, the, our, our animal control officer, which is Shayla Howe. When any animal control officer anywhere in the, in the state, you know, picks up a lost dog or or sometimes there's a dog that's suspected of rabies, or there's cats that are found or other animals that are found. We have to give them, we have to have a place to sort of shelter them while we're looking for the owners. Sometimes it's for quarantine in a case of like a suspected rabies. Sometimes there's, you know, motor vehicle accidents and a dog is involved. Or, you know, there's, there's all kinds of situations why, where dogs come into our custody while we're waiting. Sometimes dogs are just abandoned, sometimes. So we're, we, so we have to have a facility that we can keep them safely at while, while Shayla is trying to either track down the owner or deal with, you know, whatever rabies issue might be happening, et cetera. And and for those of you who know or have met Shayla, she's, she is, loves animals. And I don't think would ever turn down an animal or from, in any situation. And so often, you know, so the, the, the longer story is that we have been doing a series of workarounds for a while while we've been trying to figure out how we can actually create a proper, a proper up to code kennel for a city the size of of North Hampton, which has, you know, significant amount of animal related issues. And, you know, these kennels have very strict requirements by the state in terms of, you know, sanitation. And, you know, the size of the kennel areas. And there has to be drains for cleaning and there has to be a washer and dryer. There, you know, there's all these different requirements. There has to be a place for an outdoor run. So so it's somewhat complicated. We've been, we've actually, you know, toured new ones that have been built in other communities recently. We've been doing a bunch of different things. We were, we were partnering a little bit with Amherst for a while. We had an intermunicipal agreement with Amherst that has sort of expired, which required us to then bring dogs over the, across the river to Amherst. We've partnered with some, with some veterinary vets in some cases. And we more recently had worked out an arrangement with the new, well, new wagon tails. Daycare and boarding that was on Florence Road at the old Heritage Farm. We had a great arrangement with them. Unfortunately, COVID forced them to close that and basically put it on the market. So now we're working with Wagon Tales and Hadley as sort of a stopgap measure. But the other big challenge we've had is actually trying to find a location for where we could build this facility. Because obviously, it's not a facility that you can just, you know, build anywhere. And Counselor Labarge can tell you about a really exciting community meeting that I held on Glendale Road a couple of years ago. We had a, we had a proposal to cite this at the, on, on some former gravel pit land in conjunction with the do- dog park that was being built out there. And we had a big community meeting and had a bunch of neighbors there. And we presented sort of the designs for what this would look like. And Shayla was there. And and I heard quite strongly from the residents of Glendale Road that they did, they wanted this facility, they, they thought the facility was needed, they liked the facility. They thought Shayla was great. They thought it was important, but they did not want it on Glendale Road. And I think the counselor echoed that to me as well. And so we've been on a seri- we've been on doing a series of site selection processes over the last two to three years, where we've gotten far along in some sites. And then for whatever reason, they have, they have not, they have not panned out. That includes another former gravel pit that we looked at, some possible land there. This counselor is, you know, the, the, the old Willard pit where the marijuana cultivation facility was going to go with the solar fields where we were looking at possibly a little parcel there. It turned out to be too wet and too, and the topography was wrong. We've been talking to the owners of the, of the former Moose Lodge up in Ward One, you know, over by the trailhead up to Fitzgerald Lake. There's some land there we were looking at. That hasn't been, we haven't been able to make that work. And then every other parcel in between. So we finally, though, have identified a parcel that we think would be appropriate for it. And so it's actually a former North Hampton State Hospital land. We've been studying the special, the Acts of nineteen ninety-four, chapter eighty-six. And it's even come up tonight in some of the, some of the other stuff we've talked about. But but there, when the, when the state hospital was closed in nineteen ninety-four, there were a number of parcels that were sort of needed out to different organizations and, including the city. You know, Smith Vocational, there was agricultural land. There was obviously the community gardens are spelled out in that special act. There was land, the, the parcels I mentioned earlier that were given to the housing authority. And then there was a parcel that was actually given to the city, which we used to create part of. We used to create Ellerbrook Field. And then there's actually a sub parcel of that parcel that was specifically delineated in the act for use for a potential municipal facility. It's sort of the language. I think the theory at the time was that, and was that, you know, Village Hill was going to turn into this like, you know, new village of the city that was going to need its own school or it was going to need its own fire station or was going to need, you know, it was going to need some kind of a municipal facility there. So, you know, Representative Nagel and and his aide Peter Cocon at the time sort of carved out a little parcel that said it could be for a municipal facility. So we identified a, a parcel that we don't have to, we don't have to pay for. It was actually given to us by the state in nineteen ninety-four. So it's, it's, it's right there. And and I can pull up, I can pull up a, I can pull up a, a little just sort of schematic to show you where it is. In just one second, I just want to make sure I get it up on the screen. So just, so this has been a project that was on a prior capital program that we have been, you know, we've worked with Berkshire Design, we've worked with an architect to come up with sort of a schematic of what we've done, a needs assessment. David Pomerance knows more about, you know, dog kennels than he probably ever wanted to know. And ironically, he's, he's a volunteer on a, on a Franklin County Dog Kennel Committee, too, just for added measure. So he's sort of a, an expert on this stuff. So the, let me see if I can, if I can share screen on this. So it's actually a parcel. Let's see, is that going to work? Oh, okay. Well, that's, that's our animal control officer Shayla Howe in front of her minivan slash animal control vehicle.
That's what we see. We see a map.
Oh, okay, the, I get, I'm sorry, I thought, okay, can you see the map?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I'm sorry, there was a picture, there's also a picture on the screen back there of Shayla. So this is actually, this is actually Chapel Street. This is Rust Avenue. This is, this is the parcel that is where, you know, where Ellerbrook Field is and the parking lot of Ellerbrook Field. And then it sort of goes down and it's on a hill. So it's, that's probably why it wasn't, or it's on a slope. So that's probably why it was not used as part of Ellerbrook Field. But there's a, there's sort of a pretty wide area here with, with, you know, good separation from, from a pretty good buffer and separation from any of the nearby houses. And 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 the other piece of this is this, this facility will be sort of fenced in and secured. It won't be visible. It's not a, it's not a facility that the public goes to. It's really strictly for the, for the animal control officer to be able to securely, you know, hold and care for and feed lost animals until she can either locate the owners or or work with local vets or adoption agencies to try to find them a home. The other unique piece about this parcel is that we think, we think we're, we've already had Chris Mason do some analysis with our, with our solar consultant. And we think we're going to be able to do a ton of solar on the site and around and on the building and around the site. So we think we'll, it'll be easily be a net zero facility. It's going to have a, it's going to have a small, like mini split heating system in it. And again, I I can show another, I can show you a picture of just what, what the building looks like. It's a very basic building. You know, it's probably going to be like a cinder block construction type of a building. And probably not even two thousand square feet. If I can just get to that other document here, I can show you a different picture of it. Let me just see. I think this is the one. Oh, actually, we try this one. One second. Okay, the whole sharing thing. Let's see. Okay, so I'm going to stop share for a second. Sorry if you're getting dizzy. I just want to make sure I get the right, the right. Yeah, okay. So let me see if I can do this one. Okay, so there's the share. Okay, so this is, this is like a schematic of of what, can you see that? Of basically what this building looks like. Can you, can you see like an interior schematic of a building? Nothing?
No, we can, we can.
Okay, okay, good, okay. I'll just go down quickly. Like, this is just a, it's like a one-story building. This is kind of what it looks like. It's, you know, it's just sort of, and the up, there's not, there's just storage upstairs. But the, the basic piece of it is that, you know, it's basically a pretty wide open space with, you know, concrete floors and and drains, you know, all along it. And, you know, kennel, kennels, you know, wire frame type kennels inside with protected enclosed runs outside. There's, you know, a bathroom, there's an office for the animal control officer. There's a, you know, these are all requirements either by building code or by ADA. There's some small storage office. There's a, there, you have to have a separate quarantine wing in case you do have an animal that is being quarantined. It has to be away from any other animals that might be in there. I know the council president will be glad that there's a feline room here as well, a separate feline room for, for lost cats. And and I mentioned earlier, like, there's like, there's a requirement for like washer and dryer. I presumably because there's towels and blankets and other things that, that are used with the animals. And again, there's, uh, the only vehicles that would be coming to the site would be the animal control van. And, um, and again, this is not a site that the public comes to. So, 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 you know, this was a project that was in a prior capital plan. And we've spent several years, uh, we now have a clearer understanding of, of, well, we, we have a parcel, which is important. And again, the parcel, we still have to go through planning board and, and other processes as well. But we feel pretty confident that this could be a really good site and particularly with the solar and the fact that we could have both ground mounted as well as a solar on the building that could, that could generate electricity for it as well on, and that there'll be, you know, plenty of screening and shielding. And so we basically have asked Berkshire Design, you know, based on some schematics to give us, you know, what they think the budget for this would be before we, you know, actually have to put it out to bid. And so the funding that we previously had appropriated to the project just isn't going to be enough to actually construct the, the whole thing with all of the design and the, because it's a large enough that we have to go out to bid for a designer, an architect to actually draw the plans that go out to bid. And so that site preparation, all those different things, they're estimating that it could be as much as seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the, um, so the, the amount of money that had been appropriated previously is not sufficient. So that's why this additional money would be needed. So we want to know before we go any further, before we go through any planning process for this, or whether we go through any of the other pieces of bidding, whether we have the actual funding to do it. So this is a, one of these sort of projects that on the capital plan that sometimes we, you know, there are projects that we did multiple times. We redesigned, we value engineer. This one's mostly been stymied by the fact that we don't have a space. We haven't been able to find the land to actually construct it on for various reasons. But now we do. And so, um, so that's why I'm coming forward and asking to supplement the already approved funding for this capital project to go to, 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 to finally advance the project.
Excellent. Counselor Gray, then Counselor Labarge.
I actually, this looks like a great project and I think, and, and I know, as you say, it's long overdue. So, and I'm, I'm excited about the location too. Actually, this is, this has almost been as difficult to locate as the shelter was long ago, the, the emergency cot shelter. Given some community resistance, but presumably a facility of this size and this type, and if it has an inventory of animals, would, we, we, we can't rely on Shayla as an individual to one, go respond to calls and then at the same time maintain and monitor this around the clock. Does it require around the clock monitoring? Will it require more staff?
No, it doesn't. It's, it's, um, you know, it'll, it'll be, it, it'll be a cameraed facility, you know, there'll be, there'll be cameras inside. And so the, what typically what happens is she will go in, um, and you know, if, if, depending on when she has dogs there. But obviously she'll be there during the day and visiting and, you know, and obviously doing work there, but also feeding the animals and dealing with any veterinary needs that they may have, letting them outside. They'll only be outside when, when the staff is there. And, um, and then, you know, overnight they would be, you know, similar to, you know, veteran, veterinarian clinics or things like that. There's typically, um, or boarding facilities. There's typically, um, you know, cameras and sound activated, you know, cameras. So if some kind of a disturbance occurs in the kennel, um, that it can be monitored. Just like we have, you know, dispatch monitors, um, you know, our, you know, parking garage cameras that monitors alarms in our elevators, it monitors other things. So, so dispatch would be able to monitor any issues that happen overnight. And if there was some sort of an issue that occurred, somebody could be dispatched there to, to address it. We do have a, we, we do have, you know, this is, this is a challenging job for one person. We do have a part, part-time ACO that primarily has been used to just back up Shayla so she can actually get a vacation every once in a while. And, um, and we also work out some mutual aid agreements sometimes with other communities. It, you know, to, to have somebody be on call if, if neither of our ACOs are available. So, and actually, one of the things we're, we're looking at is whether, you know, that, that part, part-time should, should go to more part-time, you know, a little bit more part-time to supplement that. But yeah, this is, I mean, the, the problem with the Amherst one was, you know, when she put one in the Amherst facility, she had to drive over there every day to feed the, to, to feed the animals and to check on them and make sure. And, um, and you know, right now, the arrangement she's had with some of the kennels, obviously they, you know, were basically paying to board the dogs. And so they have all those amenities in-house. But it's not, it's not necessarily a reliable strategy. Just because, you know, they're, they're running a boarding business and they, you know, they, they have other clients that they have to accommodate. So it has, we've been able to selectively put dogs into different situations. And I, you know, and suffice it to say, she's not supposed to do it, but, um, you know, I, lots of dogs have slept in Shayla's living room and in her, and, you know, she, I've been at meetings where she's brought dogs to meetings with her, um, but she's keeping an eye on while she tries to find the owner. And so I've been at many meetings where her, where she has a different dog because she's got this dog that she's trying to find the owner for. And she doesn't want to drive it all the way to Amherst because then if she finds the owner, then she's going to have to, you know, come back and, and, and go back and get the dog. So, um, you know, she, uh, she, you know, she loves animals and that, you know, my, in my experience, the people that go into these, these fields, you know, the vet techs or animal control or whatever that, you know, that's, they, they want to try to save animals and save them from, you know, being euthanized and try to get them back to their owners. So this is, I mean, this is going to be incredible for her. It's going to really make her work and life less complicated. And then just to have a, a reliable, clean, safe place that's also, you know, centrally accessible, that she's not driving to, you know, West Hampton or driving to Amherst or driving to Hadley. Like even within the city limits, um, it's going to be, um, it's going to be really important. And you know, right now, if a dog is, you know, if we get a call that a dog is lost or, or somebody reports it, oftentimes a patrol officer will pick it up, um, go pick it up in the middle overnight and we'll bring it back to the station and it'll be put in a crate at the station until Shayla can get there or come in the morning to sort it out. In this case, they could take it to the kennel and just put it in a nice, secure kennel and heated and, you know, not in the hallway of, of a, of a, you know, lighted twenty-four hour busy building. And so that, and then Shayla could be dispatched to then, you know, check on the dog and then, and then she takes it away from there. So that's kind of the thought process for how this would work. So.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yeah, this seems like a, a much better solution for the humans and, and the animals involved. But could you describe the return on, on investment for having our own animal control facility? Like, what are, you know, what are we spending now and, and how long would this take to be paid back versus the current situation? Or, or not, if that's not the case, you know, if this is just a that much of an improvement that it's worth spending extra. But how much would we be spending extra in that case?
I mean, I think that, uh, I don't know, I don't know. I see Susan Wright with a calculator, but I don't know if that's, uh, if she's doing some calculations or maybe she's just doing Facebook. I don't know. I don't know if you have any idea about that, Susan, about our, our current contracts that we've had with Amherst and then with Wagon Tales. Or, or just what your general thoughts are on, on this issue?
I, I, I don't, I, I believe the, the major savings is the time involved. The time involved in Shayla driving from North Hampton over to Amherst along Route Nine, which at times can be, you know, a longer trip than others depending on traffic. It's a lot of time out of her day to make more than one trip a day over to Amherst. So it's really a time factor. It's also a lot, it's going to be a lot more efficient, um, returning dogs to owners than she doesn't have to drive all the way over to Amherst, come back, meet them at the police station. So I think the real savings will be in the efficiency of the operation more than the, the cost of, of using these other facilities. And I will say those two other facilities are more, have been more temporary solutions. They, they were never intended to be long-term solutions.
And I also just think that, you know, we're a city, the city for a city our size and we also, I mean, this is a dog and cat city. It's a dog and cat city. I had to be careful there. But people love, you know, we have a lot of dog owners and pet owners. And so, um, and there's a, there's a high expectation about, you know, the, the level of service. People love their, love their furry, uh, family members. And so, you know, we have a pretty high service level in, in terms of what the community expects. And, you know, she also does animal inspections as well. So she's the person who's out inspecting, you know, barns and she's inspecting. And sadly, there's often, she's the one who's investigating animal abuse. You, you know, you may have read the stories about, you know, it was Shayla who uncovered the, you know, the, the cockfighting, uh, uh, piece that was happening at, at some, one of our farms. People had, you know, animals in horrendous situations and, um, and that ended up in a major, you know, investigation. So she's also the person that goes out to inspect to make sure that animals are in, living in proper conditions and farms and dairy and, I don't know if she inspects llamas, I'm not sure. But, um, but so for all, you know, for all of those reasons, having her, having a central facility in North Hampton to be able to work out of reliably, I think she would tell you, and you know, I can, I, I'm, I could have her come and, and talk with the council as well if that were, if that, if you wanted that. But, but I think that that's, that, those are the intangibles of having that facility right here in the city and other communities are, are, you know, we've looked at some other communities that have built them recently and, and, um, so it's, it's, um, we, we had a situation for many years where we had someone who was our animal control officer who had an aunt that had a kennel at their home. And it was like the perfect situation and, um, but the aunt, you know, got old and passed away and the kennel closed and, and the other person retired. And so we were then faced with this gap of where, where are we going to bring the dogs and, and the cats? So, so that's really, um, I can try to get some more information about it, but I think this will be a safe, efficient, and obviously it'll be energy efficient. It'll be located in the city limits and, um, and I think it'll, it'll be ultimately safer and more, you know, humane for, for the animals that we take in and hopefully, you know, return to their owners.
Oh, boy. Okay. Counselor Mayory, Counselor Foster.
Yes, I am very excited about this facility. My internet working? Okay. And, um, I just, um, I, I'd also want to say I for one would, uh, support more staff for, for animal control. It seems like a lot. And I think that having specialist animal, you know, animal specialists doing this job and not having the police having to do this after hours. I, I would love to see a staff person who's there, you know, on call twenty-four hours a day because it seems like a burden for the police, you know, the final report of the commission stating eight, eight point six percent of the time of, of the, of the police's time being used for animal calls. And I think would be kind of a more appropriate role for an animal expert and would take burden away from the police.
You know, that certainly, um, I know that that's one of the recommendations is looking at how, whether, you know, I mean, Shayla is a civilian. She's not a police officer. She's, you know, she's a trained, you know, ACO in the Commonwealth and, you know, she's a, you know, I think she's a former vet tech and, um, and she, and so she's, so, but at this point, something certainly that can be looked at in the future. And again, it's, it's more personnel, more staff, more, more time. I don't know of any communities that, uh, most communities, many of the communities in Hampden County actually rely, uh, you know, they rely on, um, the, um, what's the, uh, the Thomas B Connell Animal Shelter there? Like that serves as their ACO and, and that's where animals go that get picked up in Springfield or places like that. But inevitably, it's, you know, either people turn them in or the police or, um, and that's sort of the model. So it would be a, you know, it would be a different model to be sure. But, um, it would be a, a significant increase in personnel and cost to do it. So I don't, I don't know what the call volume would be. But it would definitely, it would definitely be something that can be looked at. But it would, it would require, uh, an investment in additional staffing and twenty-four hour staffing. And so, you know, that would be.
Yeah, I hear, right.
Yep.
I hear that, but we're also hearing that the police are doing that job. And so there's a cost there in terms of, you know, there, other things they could be doing or, um, you know, staffing that be, and, and funds that could be used to, to staff the facility.
Understood. No, I thought these are all the, you know, these are, I mean, these things have evolved over time for a reason and, you know, we have this thing called Proposition Two and a Half in Massachusetts, which is heavily constrained our ability and, and staffing and overnight staffing and, so, you know, we don't have a lot of twenty-four hour agencies other than, you know, our dispatchers, our fire rescue, our police. We do have some, you know, DPW people that are on call and, you know, for water emergencies and things like that. But the, the common model in many, especially smaller towns than us is, you know, that, that's the, that's the model just because it's the way, you know, because it's the most cost-effective way to do it. But that, but that's, doesn't mean that other models can be looked at. But whatever model we use, what we know, uh, we, we need an animal control facility, you know, no matter who's staffing it or who's driving the dogs there or who's, you know, the facility is again, it's the bricks and mortar conversation versus the, versus the whole operational conversation. So.
I agree that we need the facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Foster, you still have your hand up? Yeah, Counselor Foster, to the facility.
Yes, to the facility. Thank you. Another, just a, a quick question I had for you is, um, how many dogs are typically, and cats, excuse me? How many animals are typically in custody or waiting for owners or, or quarantined at a time? Is it like one or two? Are we talking six or seven? I, I just wanted to get a sense.
You never know.
You're muted, Mayor.
Sorry about that. Sorry about that. I think it's cyclical. I know we've got some data that we collected because I know when we were looking at, um, and I should have brought it, I'm sorry. I can get it for you. I know one of the things when, when Shayla was sitting down with David Pomerance to talk about like, you know, how many, how many, you know, how, how many different kennel spaces should we have? You know, she was trying to think of like, okay, the worst case, you know, scenario, how many dogs would we possibly have at one point? I think it's more on the average of like, you know, two to four on a regular basis, um, coming and going. But there are times when, when, you know, there may be more. So I think that, I think there's space for like six now in there and then to quarantine area and then the cat room. So I think she was, uh, trying to build it for, for that. I mean, so on the high end, we have enough, I think we have enough to accommodate what's sort of the high watermark for her. But I don't think it would be filled to capacity, um, you know, on, on, on average times, but it, but it's, it's very, it's very cyclical and, um, and, and, you know, there could be a convergence of a lot of different things that have, that caused her to, to come into possession of a dog.
Uh, Counselor Labarge, did you have a question on the building?
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm supporting this a hundred percent. I think the site, it's, uh, it wouldn't have been like Windale Road area, which I'm thankful for that. It's not into a residential with homes around and so forth. I think it's a great site area. So I am going to support this a hundred percent. But I also feel being a dog lover, showing dogs for many, many years, that I have concerns of just one person and I And I understand, Mayor, about the staffing part of it and so forth. But I think eventually we need to look at that and look at also the health of a dog. You know, all of a sudden, something could happen to a dog or a cat, whatever. And you can have all the monitors in the world and it's good to have a person there that can observe an animal that's being brought in and when an animal is not well. So, but anyways, that's my thoughts. And I agree with, um, Counselor Rachel Mayore on the staffing part of it. Hopefully we can think about this coming down the line because I think it needs to be done. I think it needs to be out of the police department and have it being an entity of its own. So I thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, Counselor Foster.
Very brief. Uh, Counselor Labarge, I, I, uh, this is my neighborhood and it's, um, I think a fantastic logical site. But I did just want to caution, there, there are houses, um, on one side and and across the street from from Chapel. So, yeah.
And I'm mindful of that, Counselor Foster, and I know that that's, you know, we'll, we'll be going through a, a, a site plan process. So neighbors will have an opportunity to weigh in and, but I, but we're going to work hard to have. I mean, it's a, it's a pretty big parcel, you know, you, you, you know, so it's, there's, and luckily, you know, where where it faces back, it's facing basically just up the hill towards, you know, towards Ellerbrook Field. So, um, there's nobody directly behind it. And the people across the street aren't going to really see it or see anything in the building. No, it'll be a fenced in, uh, facility and it's not like there's picture windows or anything like that. So we hope that it'll be a fairly low impact, um, uh, you know, facility. And, you know, obviously there's, there's, um, uh, landscaping that can happen. And then hopefully, as I mentioned, some of the ground, there might be ground mount solar as well incorporated into some of the screening. So, yeah. But, but, but thank you. I mean, thank you for, I I realize there's questions about, you know, the operational aspects of, of, um, of the ACO going forward. And those may not be my decisions, but, um, but thank you for this because this is just, you know, one of these projects that has just been going on forever. And, um, and whenever I see Sheila, I cross the street and duck my head because I still haven't gotten the building for her. So, um, I, she's going to be really excited to, um, to know this is finally happening. So anyway, I'm, I'm excited that if we can finally get this over the finish line.
Um, I just want to give another quick shout out to Sheila myself because she is truly remarkable. And, um, there was so much about animals that it's my understanding that even on the rare times that she takes a vacation, she will often then travel long distances to rescue animals during her vacation and then bring them back and get them adopted out. So that's what she also does in her rare spare time. She's amazing. Um, I also want to thank you for the.
Here's Sheila. I, I, is, can you see the picture?
Ah, that's a good one.
Yeah, that's Sheila in front of her, uh, minivan turn slash, you know, um, animal control vehicle.
She's awesome. Um, and thank you for the recognition and appreciation for the cats of North Hampton. They're very important. And I've seen quite a few of them already this evening, including my own on these screens. Um, okay, so.
They don't require licensure. That's, you know, that, that's one inequity in the city. The dogs have to be licensed, but cats don't. I don't get that.
That's what a lot of people are saying.
One last thing, this is a total pipe dream. I know you're going to think I'm crazy. But just when you're looking at the plans and trying to figure this out, and especially if there's going to be solar, um, I think it would be, um, I'm sorry. I think it would be amazing if there was under floor heating for the little paws because I think that that would be really lovely. And so if that wasn't an exorbitant cost, um, I think that that would be a very comfortable building for those animals.
But, okay, we got a.
That sounds good.
Cat on the screen. Okay, I will, I will mention that to Director Pomerantz.
On that note, I don't see any further.
I'm just trying to applaud you and I can't turn off my, um, hand now, but I was trying to applaud you, uh, President.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Let's not, like, I don't have that in my own home, but I think it would be great for the animals.
I do, and it's awesome.
Yeah, I can only imagine. It's a dream for me, for the animals and for myself someday. Um, okay. Roll call please on a positive recommendation, Laura.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
And Counselor Shara.
Yes. That moves forward. And that brings us to the end of the finance agenda. We're back in council. Yes, I, most, Counselor Dwight and Counselor Quinlan, are you saying, going to say the same thing?
Well, I'm going to actually call for a break, but, uh, but I think, I suspect Counsel Quinlan may too. But what I would like to, the council to consider when we come back is to move these as a package. And, you know, chew on that while you're taking a break.
That's a good idea. I actually was going to just, uh, I was going to make, that's maybe a better suggestion than the preview I was going to do, which is that I was going to say we did like the hard work right now. And I was going to have a skip down to the zoning and then take these up later. But if we were to move these as a package, um, we could do that very quickly. That's an excellent idea. Five minute recess.
Wait, did, did you have to, um, recess finance?
Did I have to adjourn finance?
Yes, or adjourn, that's what I meant.
Is there a motion?
Move to adjourn finance. Second.
Second now.
Uh, roll call on adjourned finance. Thank you for reminding me.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes, yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
All right, five minute recess, everybody. We are back and we are back to the full council. And Counselor Dwight, uh, please share your excellent idea.
Well, I think we should all work at the animal control facility. No, that wasn't it. Um, I'd like to move as a package, item two nineteen through two thirty and also include two thirty-four and two thirty-five and two thirty-seven and move them as a group.
Second.
Second now.
Any motions made and seconded? Any discussion on moving these as a group? Seeing none, roll call on moving them as a group. Yes.
Would it just be to approve them as a group, um, with the vote?
The, the motion is to move them to approve.
Okay.
As a group. So, so we only have to do one vote.
Roll call on them as a group.
Counselor Dwight.
Oh, yeah.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, those pass on first reading. Let's just get this financial order that's on second reading out. And then, um, Susan, if she's still here, can go. So that's twenty one point two oh five in order to establish water and sewer rates for FY twenty-two on second reading.
Move to approve.
Second now.
Any discussion on second reading? Seeing none. Oh, Counselor Foster, did you have?
Oh, no, I was prepping for the vote.
Roll call, please, Laura, on second reading on water and sewer rates.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Okay, we've moved through all of our financial orders. Um, I'm gonna now skip us down to eighteen and we'll come back to the other stuff after, but we're going down to ordinances. So this is twenty point one eight one, an ordinance relative to affordable housing. This is on first reading. This has received a positive recommendation from Legislative Matters. The Planning Board unanimously adopt recommends adopt, adoption of it. And it also had a positive recommendation from, uh, Community Resources. And there was a joint public hearing. So.
Move to approve, please.
Second.
By Counselor Dwight, technically by Counselor Labarge, I'm going to read it real quick. Um, this is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. North. An ability and ordinance of the City of North Hampton, Bead or Dame, my city, Council of City of North Hampton, City Council, almost assembled as followed. Add three fifty dash six point one two affordable housing. Whereas the ma, quote Massachusetts Comprehensive Permit Law, unquote Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty B, sections twenty to twenty-two and the Massachusetts Comprehensive Permit, uh, Low and Moderate Income Housing Regulations, seven sixty C M R fifty six point zero zero, allow for a single local board to administer and to waive any and all local zoning ordinance and other local ordinances and regulations as the single approving authority to encourage affordable housing upon obtaining a site eligibility letter from the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, D H C D. Such site eligibility letter creates a burden for some projects, especially small projects. It requires the paying of a fee, the calculation of a developer's reasonable return, the provision of architectural elevations, among other requirements. Whereas it is the city's intention to provide some zoning relief consistent with city needs and while avoiding the need for a D H C D site eligibility letter. A, all projects approved under this section must meet the following criteria. One, at least fifty percent of the residential units being created shall be, quote, affordable units, end quote. Two, all permanent energy sources, thermal loads, hot water and electric loads shall be from grid supplied electricity or otherwise not use, not use fossil fuels, natural gas, propane, oil or wood. This shall not apply to emergency generators, outdoor grilling or mobile energy uses. Three, prior to obtaining a building permit, the applicant shall obtain D H C D approval as local initiative program, L I P, units so that all affordable units created under this section can be listed by D H C D on their subsidized housing inventory. Prior to obtaining a building permit, the applicant shall obtain site plan approval, section three fifty dash eleven. B, the planning board may approve affordable housing projects as part of a slight site plan approval when, one, the allowable dwelling units per acre density of the entire project is two hundred and fifty percent of that otherwise allowed by the zoning ordinance in the zoning district in which the property is located. There are no other minimum lot size requirements or any lots created under this section, for any lots created in this section. Two, the minimum frontage, lot depth and lot width is at least forty percent of that otherwise required by the zoning ordinance in the zoning district in which the property is located. Three, when significant trees on the property are cut, they shall be replaced on site with new trees to the extent feasible without blocking solar, photovoltaic or hot water systems. But no payment in lieu is required when such planting is not feasible. Such mitigation is required for all cutting public shade trees. Four, all other zoning applies and is complied with. C, the planning board may issue a special permit for additional zoning dimensional and density relief when, one, the application specifically details requested zoning relief to ensure that the project and the project permit conditions are not uneconomic as defined by Massachusetts Law forty B and seven. and the project permit conditions are not uneconomic as defined in Massachusetts Law 40B and 760 CMR 56.00. Two, the planning board finds that the project with a special permit for the requested zoning relief still meets local concerns as defined in 760 CMR 56.00 and as evidenced by the city's master comprehensive and strategic plans. The planning board, three, the planning board finds that the special permit conditions of Section 350-10 are met. Okay, this is already on the floor and Carolyn has been waiting patiently too. Councillor Dwight, did you have? Did you raise your hand?
No, I'm gonna allow Carolyn to do what I was gonna do anyway. I was just gonna get all windy about what a great idea this is, not let Carolyn actually tell it from a planning perspective. Like she has an education and a degree in it, so.
She has been bringing her entire meeting for this opportunity, so let's let her have.
Carolyn, have fun.
Well, this probably isn't as, may not be as much fun as talking about dogs, but, or cats. But anyway, the, the idea, and I know at the last meeting when this was also on the agenda, I went through sort of that whole framework of the housing proposals that the mayor has sponsored over the last couple of months to try to address housing needs in the city. And so, again, just to reiterate, this is one of those pieces of the package. And it's, it's to try to address some of the burdens that mostly the nonprofit sector in the region would be able to access to provide housing. There's a burden that you need to go through the state eligibility process, which can take months before you can actually come to the city, to the zoning board in this instance. That process is called the, is under Chapter 40B. And it is essentially a waiver process from zoning regulations for the purposes of providing affordable housing. The language in front of you is, creates a parallel process, but at a local level, and removes some of that burden that affordable housing developers feel when they first have to go through the state before they come back and get approvals from local cities and towns. So, this is really just to streamline the process for those developers who are, who are intending to build affordable housing in the city and just try to make it a little bit easier. And it lays out very specific sort of waiver standards that aren't already established under the Section 40B state rules. And you know what, we don't, we think that it's just another tool for entities like Habitat for Humanity or Valley Community Development Corporation to use as one path to get to permitting new housing in the city.
Okay, have at it councillor Dwight.
So, the thing is, is Chapter 40B for folks who might not understand, and that's kind of like gobbledygook, it's a state, it's a state enabling law that essentially allows a developer to come into a community and bypass a lot of the strict zoning if that community does not meet a certain threshold of affordability based on their, based on a variety of formulas, because affordable means so many different things to so many different people, but there's actually a definition for it. Northampton actually, I think, Carolyn, correct me if I'm wrong, I think 11% is the threshold, 11% affordability of housing stock. Somewhere there. The fact is, Northampton meets and exceeds that. But a lot of communities look at that as the high point. That's actually the baseline of affordability. That's the lowest you can go before the state allows developers to consider moving in and developing. What this is, this is a community expressing itself and saying that we are inviting affordable housing developers into the community. Do not look at us like we are putting up resistance to this. We are actually enabling with some carrots and a streamlined process that you are welcome to consider developing affordable projects here. And, and the two developers that Carolyn cited have actually been very good to this community as far as that goes. That said, they met with considerable resistance in many cases for, particularly for larger projects. And that's, by the way, the resistance tends to be neighbors in the butters. This will actually, it will cause some consternation, I'm pretty sure. You will get some resistance from, I actually, what you'll find is lots of buy-in from the communities of the agreeing wholeheartedly that we should do whatever we can to promote and expand affordable housing in the community until such time that suddenly somebody starts staking out someplace in their neighborhood and that enthusiasm tends to wane PDQ. But the fact is, is I think that we, it is incumbent upon us to walk the talk. And we, you know, if we subscribe to the notion that diversity actually strengthens and enhances a community, then damn it, we better be able to promote the opportunity for that to occur. So far, some of the more controversial zoning oddly enough that we've dealt with actually is more about expanding housing options. Not affordable, but attainable, is the new term of art seems to be. And this, as Carolyn described, is part of a comprehensive package. One, offering more attainable housing reduces the pressures on existing affordable units or potential affordable properties that might be, look appealing to a developer who wants to just tear down and do high-end housing and then losing some subsequent, subsequently losing in most cases rental properties. So, this informs all the other items that we've already voted on. And to be honest, we've already voted on the toughest part. However, I think the toughest part comes, and as I said, it's easy for me to say because I'm not gonna have to fight this fight, but this is for those of you who will continue to stay on. There will be projects proposed under this, under this arrangement that will be facilitated by this arrangement, which will meet with community resistance. It, it just happens. But the fact is, is if we're going to talk about climate resiliency and actually talk about embedding it in everything that we do, and if we're going to talk about equity and social equity and providing opportunity for communities that have, of, who've run into barriers and to trying to move into this community. If we want those to inform everything that we discuss and if we wanted to actually be real and on the ground and the experience of this community, then this is a perfect assembly of, of, of proposals. And this in particular is the one that appeals to me the most. So, as you can probably tell, I'm kind of gonna vote for this.
Thank you for that. Other, Carolyn, is it 11% or 10%?
So, the state threshold, the, the minimum number of, or percentage housing units that the state is targeting for each community to achieve is 10%. And then below which, i-if you're a community that falls below that 10%, then there's a, this path, this 40B path process whereby a developer could propose a project that would waive any number, or request to waive any number of the local community zoning regulations. And if the zoning board didn't grant that permit, then there would be an appeals process that bypasses the local community and goes straight to the state for review. So, a-as councillor Dwight mentioned, it's used. So, many communities sort of fear dropping below that 10% because then they would be subject to potentially projects that are completely out of scale with, with the community. This has happened in a lot of suburban Boston communities. Northampton is just over 12%. So, we're, we haven't been subject to sort of that, what people call is the threat of an outside large-scale developer coming in and building these units. But we've always taken the opportunity to work with applicants to, because we know that 10 or 11 or 12% isn't enough to meet our needs and that cost of housing continues to rise. So, we've consistently worked with Valley and previously have, now Wayfinders on projects that they might not be able to do with the underlying zoning, but if they sought waivers through this 40B process, then they could get a per-permit for housing development. And so we refer to that as sort of a friendly process or a friendly 40B. And so we've had a number of these projects approved from, by the zoning board, but there aren't any sort of, there's no structure to it. An applicant can ask for any kind of waiver. It's not necess, I mean, this particular ordinance talks about 250% of the allowable densities above and beyond what the underlying zoning would allow. There isn't that kind of threshold under the 40B process. So in some senses, this sort of sets the framework of what we anticipate and what, what makes sense for providing waivers. And however, you could go beyond that with a special permit if you took that, you know, one step further. And I also wanted to add that, coming out of Community Resources, there was a recommendation, and I think it went through Legislative Matters and Planning Board as well, to clarify the language about getting these units counted on the state's inventory for affordable housing. And I didn't see that in the language on the agenda, but I want to make sure that the councillors consider that. And it's in paragraph A1, I think, I'm sorry, A3, to add an alternative to that paragraph that would say that you could either, A, get approval through the, shall be, that, that prior to obtaining a building permit, the applicant shall obtain, A, DHCD approval as a local initiative unit, so that all affordable units created under this section can be listed by DHCD be in their subsidized housing inventory, or B, show evidence of other Commonwealth funding that requires these units to be counted on the DHCD subsidized housing inventory. And that distinction, although it may not make sense to a lot of people, is important for the housing developers because for many of the state funding sources, you have to show that these units get counted because the state tracks these units and that's how we know across the Commonwealth what percentage each community, what percentage of affordable housing each community is meeting. And again, the definition of affordable housing is housing that meets the needs of people making 80% or less of the area median income. So it's important that anytime we create units that will be permanently protected as affordable housing, that they get counted on this state inventory.
Councillor Dwight.
Well, then I would like to move an amendment to under A, number three, and the clause that Carolyn listed as B, which hopefully Carolyn will share with Laura again, be included as an amendment.
There a second?
Second.
Councillor Thorpe did second, but if we're counting those.
I can't hear you. Seconded by councillor Thorpe. And any discussion on this amendment? Councillor Jarrett.
Carolyn, did you have any other suggestions that we could bundle? I think there was something about the fossil fuel.
Yes, so there had also been discussion about striking wood out of that list of fossil fuel elements, so that, and that's just a deletion in actually the sentence above in A2, where it says otherwise not fossil fuels, parentheses, natural gas, propane, oil. And just leave it at that by striking the word wood.
And with the.
I'd accept that as a, as an amendment as well.
Okay, so those two amendments bundled together. Any further discussion on those amendments? Okay, Laura, roll call please on the amended language.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor Labarge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
And councillor Foster.
Yes.
Okay, um, further discussion as amended. All right. Um, I just want to say that this is, I agree with councillor Dwight. This is incredibly exciting. And I think I've, you know, often been trying to figure out ways to make this process less onerous for people who are trying to create affordable units. And so I'm really excited about this. All right, any other discussion? Roll call, please Laura, as amended.
Councillor Labarge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
And councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Okay, that passes on first reading and we're at 21.189. Nordance create an incentive for smaller houses by allowing two half-scale units to count as a single family for density purposes. This went through the same process, got a positive recommendation from Community Resources. There was a joint hearing between Planning and Legislative Matters and both gave it a positive recommendation.
Overapproval, please.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Dwight, seconded by councillor Labarge. And I'm going to read it. This is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Norwood's Plan Sustainability. Nordance of City of Northampton, providing that the code of ordinance of City of Northampton be amended to create an incentive for smaller residential units to be built in the URB and URC districts by allowing half-scale units to count as half a single regular-sized unit for density purposes. Further, whereas electricity from an electric grid, which must meet state renewable energy portfolio standards and more easily converted to renewable energy, will facilitate the city's effort to attain carbon neutrality by 2050. New projects created within this proposed zoning shall be built so all onsite systems are fossil fuel-free for thermal and electric loads. Be it ordained by City Council, City of Northampton, City Council, as follows, add a new definition in 350-2.1 as follows. Dwelling half-scale, a unit that's no larger than 800 square feet of gross living area within the table of uses where allowed and for the purpose of calculating total allowable density, two half-scale units shall be treated as one dwelling unit. Amend attachments, seven URB and eight URC as follows, lot dimensional requirements, lot size. Single two-family or two-half-scale units, 3,750 square feet. Three-plus units, 2,500 square feet minimum per unit or per two-half-scale units. Uses allowed by rights, single, two, three-family, multifamily, townhouses with six or fewer units or 12 or fewer half-scale units. Half-scale units shall not have any onsite use of fossil fuels, natural gas, propane, oil for any thermal, heating, cooling, water, heating or electric loads. Electricity from an electric grid and fossil fuel use limited to emergency generators after billing or, or mobile uses, cars, lawn mowers, snow blowers are permitted. Site plan approval required for the following, any construction we're striking other than for a single-family home or two-family less than 3,400 square feet. Great, so any construction greater than 2,000 square. So any construction greater than 2,000 square feet, this requirement applies to all uses except for single-family homes and up to two-half-scale units. Half-scale units shall not have any onsite use of fossil fuels, natural gas, propane, oil, ready thermal, heating, cooling, water, heating, or electric loads. Electricity from electric grid and fossil fuel use limited to emergency generators after grilling or mobile uses, car, lawnmower, snow blowers are permitted. Special permit approval required for the following uses by the planning board. Any multifamily or townhouse project creating seven or more units or 14 or more half-scale units. Half-scale units shall not have any onsite use of fossil fuels, natural gas, propane, oil for any thermal, heating, cooling, water, heating, or electric loads. Electricity from an electric grid and fossil fuel limited to emergency generators after grilling or mobile uses, cars, lawnmowers, snow blowers are permitted. It's already on the floor, yes? So Carolyn?
So the idea about introducing an incentive for smaller units that could be rental or ownership units is to try to encourage filling that gap that we have in, in housing. We, over the years, we've heard people say that there's just, there aren't options for people who don't need so much space. And it, of course, also is more cost-attainable, cost-effective for people to be able to get into the housing market. And we also know that the way that the zoning has been set up, you know, for a long time, based on the allowance of units per lot size, is, is, has a built-in incentive for big units. So you can, if you're only allowed four units on a property, then you're going to maximize the space in those units that you can, up to, of course, the open space constraints or the setback constraints on the property. So this provides a mechanism to encourage smaller units without being penalized because you're basically getting two units for the same as you would get a one regular-sized unit. I will say the 800 square feet also comes from talking to a few different people, but also it happened to be the original square footage allotted when we, when the city first adopted accessory dwelling units in the city. The 800 square feet was, was the number used as the cap back 25 years ago, what have you. And it doesn't change, this ordinance doesn't change the parking requirements. We still have a parking requirement of one space per 1,000 square feet of living area. So you'd still be required to have one parking unit per 800-square-foot unit. It's, so, and anything over 1,000 square feet automatically requires two parking spaces. So if you compare that to a typical single-family home, you're only required two parking spaces. So in this scenario, you're essentially getting two units and you're still providing two parking spaces because it's, you know, two times 800. So the ordinance just specifies that this would be applicable in each of the various standards where we allow single-family homes, multifamily homes, and then the special permit threshold of more than, more than seven units.
It's worth noting, I mean, I think any one of us is, has heard from a number of people in the community, particularly in the tiny house movement, this doesn't, this does not qualify as tiny house size. There are limitations or restrictions by state code that we just simply can't accommodate right now. But the fact is, is this is the next best thing. And it really does, again, this, this is, the two items that we're voting on tonight are the more affordable dimensions of the, of the package. And it, just another forewarning, again, I'll speak devil's advocate, but I'm actually fully in favor of this. But it will, it will generate resistance. I guarantee it. A proposed project that suddenly sees 12 small units propping up in what used to be a backyard of an, on a butter is going to cause consternation. And the thing is, is that the challenge is, is to try and, one, hear the pain and, and that's being described by people who oppose these things, but realize that you're also devoted to the, the, the very right and moral principle about expanding options and affordability in, in your community. And these are often difficult conversations. You've already, many of you have already been steeped in them already. I mean, in fact, all of you had a baptism by fire in the last two years, I have to say. And it's a wonder any of you are going to stick around. But the fact is that you have shows that you are capable of being devoted to these principles and, and upholding them when push comes to shove. And there will be some shoving. But this is also a very great proposal.
Counselor Labarge?
Thank you, Counsel President. I'm going to echo everything that Counselor Dwight has stated to the councilors. I've been there. I'm going through it. And I don't care how I have to go through it. I won't sit back because I will fight for what I believe in. And I believe in affordable housing. I just had today a resident in my ward who called me. Bill, you know who I'm talking about. Does not want anybody moving into our city. Does not want affordable housing. Does not want two families. Does not want anybody moving into a neighborhood, period. This is what I deal with out here in Ward Six, which Counselor Dwight has been with me 100% of some really nasty, nasty situations. And Counselor Shara also has seen it happen with the mayor overlooking for a place to put our dogs and cats. So I just want to tell you, I don't sit here. I don't laugh about it. I fight for what I believe and what many people believe in this city, what they want. They want affordable housing. So I stand strong on that. And I hate to see Counselor Dwight leave because he's always been there, always been there, helping me. Because this is not an easy ward at all, at all. But I believe in what I believe in. And I have so many other people who believe in affordable housing, small homes, I'm happy for that. Because I have people telling me that they would like a smaller home. And on Glendale Road right now, through Habitat, I have a smaller home. And it's adorable. And it's going to be for one person. So I'm for, I'm for whatever it's going to be for affordable housing. And yes, Counselor Dwight is, is very right about what he's saying. You better be strong and you better fight for it because you are going to get resistance. Thank you.
Well said, Counsel Labarge.
You're welcome.
Counselor Nash?
Yeah, I just want to thank Aiden O'Donoghue for his wonderful tour of his, he gave me a personal tour of his little house. It's great. And, and, and the, the fact that he is so pleased with it, it, it's just like, okay, I'm convinced. So thank you, thank you to Aiden.
I know.
I thank the world for Aiden every day. Any other comments? I think this is great. We desperately need more units. And these, by definition, will be more attainable than a single-family house on a lot. So that's what we need. And so I'm, we'll be right there with you, Counsel Labarge, fighting for it.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Mayori?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Carolyn. You are.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Carolyn out before midnight. Just maybe.
Okay, let me figure out where we are.
Hit me with you.
Scooty, scoot, 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 scoot. Okay, we're up to 15.
Wow.
This is on second reading, 21.212, an order to set preliminary municipal election date.
No approval points.
Wait, seconded by Counselor Labarge. Any discussion on second reading? Seeing none, roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Mayori?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Getting there. Counselor Nash, we didn't get that.
Yeah.
We're not going to pantomime.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes, sorry, I was being a jerk.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
And Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Okay, that passes on second reading. We're up to ordinances not yet referred. We.
Take it as a package.
Let me, let, okay. Someone want to make that motion?
Sure, I'll make that motion. I would like to take 16A, B, C, D.
As a group?
Yes.
Referral to legislative matters, right? Second.
Okay, this is being seconded. Any discussion on moving these as a group to legislative matters? Counselor Nash?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. It, I don't think it needs to go to Community Resources. Counselor Jarrett did a great job of getting folks to show up for the TPC. So we had plenty of discussion there. And so I'm comfortable with not going to Community Resources with these.
Okay, so they've been to TPC?
They came out of the TPC.
Oh, okay. They all came out of the TPC? I just asked because I'm looking at 21.215. That is upon the recommendation of the mayor and, and Public Works, not TPC.
All right, let me pull that one up.
They all are.
They all, were all referred to me from TPC?
Okay.
By Cindy Quinn, so.
Okay, even though they're not sponsored, they've been there.
Right.
Got it, okay, great. Any, Counsel Jarrett?
And they received a positive recommendation from TPC.
Okay, so moving them as a group just to legislative matters. Any further discussion? Roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
And Counselor Mayori?
Yes.
Okay, those moved there. Next, we're at zoning ordinances not yet referred. So Master of Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, requires the City Council to submit zoning ordinances to Planning Board for review within 14 days of receipt from the Planning Board, City Council, committee designated for that purpose to hold a public hearing thereon, together or separately prior to adoption. So we've got two of these.
I would move them both to be referred to a joint hearing on, by the Planning Board and Legislative Matters. And yeah, I, that'll be the referral. And then we'll discuss the optimal date for that.
Can I get a second? Seconded by Counselor Foster. Okay, so now discussion. Counselor Mayori and Counselor Nash?
Who's going first?
Well, there's been some discussion about whether these zoning ordinances should be, should be referred to Community Resources because there's been a lot of community discussion and concern around them. I'm just kind of putting that out there. Maybe Counselor Nash would like to add to that discussion.
Yeah, I, I share that. I, I think that I would like to see these go to Community Resources just to, because there's been a lot of mention of the zero-lot line portion of zoning throughout the discussions with the, with the Bay State folks. And so I think that's appropriate. And the other thing is that I'm interested in having a meeting of the full council with, when meeting with the Planning Board. That I, I, I personally would like to be part of those discussions with the Planning Board when we're, when we're vetting zoning matters.
Counselor Dwight?
I respectfully disagree. I think that, one, actually, if, if the counselor is interested, can certainly convene his committee in that respect. But there is a hearing that is open to the entire public. This joint hearing is invited, and in, that would include counselors. The, the one thing that I would caution them is, is deliberative or anything that could be interpreted as deliberative under the process. I, for one, don't want to make it, you know, one of these deals where we're essentially deliberating in the process of a subcommittee review. And I've had this discussion before. I think it is certainly the right of the, of the Community Resources to, one, ask for a referral and, two, and to conduct their meeting in the way that they see fit. But the fact is, is that if Counselor, I have a problem in a public hearing where Counselor, that it's a public hearing involving the subcommittee, or if counselors can participate where the rest of the public cannot once you close the public hearing. I have a problem with that. I think that that, at that point, it's more appropriate because there'll be multiple opportunities for the public, including the folks in Bay State, to weigh in during the hearing, during the meeting of Community Resources, during the debate on the floor of the council as well, and all the intervening time. And the same thing, the opportunity for the counselors to learn or ask questions, particularly if it's of anyone in the planning office, to be able to refer their questions to them beforehand or call them any time in the interim. So I prefer in the interest of maintaining a higher-functioning meeting that works on complicated issues to basically stay constrained under the guidelines that I lay out as the, as the chair and the presiding officer, at least of the legislative matters part. Of course, it's certainly within your right to ask the chair of the Planning Board if he sees it differently.
Yes, so what I'm asking for is not for the Legislative Matters Committee to open up the floor to include other counselors. What I'm asking for is around this, this zoning matter that we have the full council have the, the hearing with the Planning Board, that, that I find the discussions that, I, I, for me, it's really helpful to have the discussion with the Planning Board members. That, that around that, a few meetings ago, where our, our last hearing around zoning matters, that, that I, I was actually in discussion with a lot of the folks who were in the room from Bay State. I, and, and that I, I really wanted to engage in that discussion with the Planning Board. Some of the items came up in that meeting around setting caps and things like that. And that, and I think it's, you know, I think it's appropriate for the entire council to be, to be able to participate in a hearing like that with the Planning Board.
Well, I, I listen, my objections and they stand.
Counselor Jarrett?
Counselor Dwight, is, is that objection have to do with the, and I've heard Attorney Seewell talk about the quasi-judicial nature of the deliberation at that point? Or is it, is it, you know, is there a concern that, that we, that, that having other counselors engage there would be, would be a concern there? that we, that, that having other counselors engage, uh, there would be, would be a concern there, or is it different?
Engaging and deliberating are two different things, and, and sometimes it's hard to parse out the two. There's more clarity if we function in the way that was, that I originally described. We couldn't, we could convene as a full council and with a full meeting of the, of the Planning Board, but that's a different that's an animal of a different color, it's not legislative matters, it's not, it won't be a referral coming from legislative matters, at which point that would be redundant. So, um, uh, I've discussed this with Counselor Nash in the past, and I believe it will also, also come up as a discussion in the context of, uh, our rules discussion, but yeah, it, it, to your point about, essentially it's an adjudication, we're deliberating and creating a law. And in that respect, I think it, we should be assiduous in following the, the, the best practices and guidelines. Um, if, if you would prefer, if the council's preference is to convene as an entire council with the entire Planning Board to conduct a hearing, um, then we, uh, then the question of referral by a subcommittee is moot, it'd be silly to have another meeting or another hearing based under our rules, because at that point it would be moot. And it wouldn't be fair to the public to have two public hearings on the same item, because I suspect you would strongly, you would hear from the same people about the same thing, so. So, that said, and also I, I would like to point out that the items that, that Counselor Nash had heard from the residents of of, of, uh, Warner Street principally, but the rest of Bay State who were representing were already shared in the context of the conversation that didn't have to come through Counselor Nash, but it, it is, and th- this is the opportunity for the public to share with us their thoughts. It is less the opportunity for councils to share their thoughts because the council has multiple opportunity, do have the multiple opportunities to do such. This is where we are to gather information and then make our recommendation. That's all, and then, and, you know, and I would defer to the, the majority of the body, but that, I, those are my preferences.
Could I respond?
Uh, yeah, just for, just to clarify, even if the full council were to hold the joint hearing, it, it would still then need to go to legislative matters.
Correct.
Uh, Counselor Nash?
Yeah, and, and so I, I don't view it as an opportunity for me to voice my ideas during the hearing. It's my opportunity to hear from the Planning Board members what they're thinking. I think it's really important that when we're deciding on zoning matters, that we're, we're the legislators, we're the, we're the folks that are going to take it and turn it into, you know, uh, into law, but they're the guy, they're the folks on the ground that are actually in the weeds practicing it all the time. And that I really value having their opinion and, and being part of that discussion. And, um, and that I've, I've, as you know, I've attended several hearings between Legislative Matters and, and the Planning Board, and I, and I find it very fruitful discussion. And, um, I think it would, for, for myself, I would like to be part of that. And I suspect maybe some other counselors might like to do that as well, and the solution would be to, you know, it would honor our, um, our committee process to have the whole, the, the, the joint hearing actually held by the full council, and that's what I'm interested in having. And yes, it can still go to Legislative Matters.
It has to go to Legislative Matters.
It has to go to, yes.
It has to.
Counselor Jarrett and Counselor Quinlan?
Uh, so if we did that, uh, we would hold, you know, the full council on the Planning Board, and then could we immediately have a Legislative Matters meeting after that, um, so that it would be convenient and happen quickly?
If that's directed to me, yes, yes you could, otherwise you would have Community Resources conducting their hearing, meeting, discussion. You would have the joint hearing with the council and the Planning Board, and then, otherwise, then we'd have a separate, uh, Legislative Matters meeting, which essentially be moot, as I said, but the fact is, is that you'd have three meetings and then two readings on the council floor, and if this damn subject isn't vetted clearly enough by then, then I don't know who will be satisfied.
Right, so Counselor Nash, you would be proposing not having a Community Resources meeting then, in this case?
I, and you know, I would be willing, yeah, that, that might be the way to go.
Counselor Quinlan, did I see your hand?
You, you did, but, um, I, I think I'm sufficiently confused now not to ask the question.
Counselor Foster?
Okay, I'll jump in the weeds with confusion, um, my understanding is that council committee meetings are posted as full council meetings, so that if another counselor comes, then we have a quorum of the counselor, but then it's posted as a public meeting. Are you, is there a different process then when it's a joint meeting with the Planning Board? Because my experience so far has been if a counselor were to attend a committee meeting, that counselor is typically recognized as the other counselors are and is able to participate.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's, that is, actually, that evolved as a response to, um, the lack of clarity from the, uh, the Attorney General's Office when we asked them about that. If a counselor go, another counselor goes and attends a public meeting, are they in violation just by their presence of open meeting law? And they said, well, yeah, they are, so, and I, we asked directly, well then what's the answer to that? Because that's crazy, and they offered, well, just call it as a council meeting, and then you'll be covered. But it wasn't an invitation for the other councils to literally participate as if they're committee members. But that, that's what we put in place is basically a safety catch for, because the Attorney General's Office was not being very helpful in, in, in describing what was the best way to proceed. They're basically giving us a dodge, a way to get around it, but in point in fact, it, because at that point, if that were the case, and each one of these actually functioned as a full city council meeting, then we should dispense with subcommittees altogether.
There you go.
They, the, the subcommittee shouldn't exist at all, because then we just have a ton of city council meetings, and you can show up or not, you don't have to, you know, I have, I must say attendance by this council has been impeccable. But you look at other city councils, and they always show members who don't show up, basically because at some point you got too many people doing too many things. That is my concern, that's where I, I believe that subcommittees should function as subcommittees, and, uh, the trust of their, uh, colleagues is invested in them. Uh, I take at their word, the recommendations from, for, for instance, Community Resources. If I have a question, if I have a concern, I can direct it to them, if there's a concern I have with any department head or any other board, I have the opportunity to ask them directly, I don't need to be in the attendance of a public meeting or hearing to do that. The problem is also, as I said, that concerns me is, in that respect, it's a pantomime if we're talking about these as being hearings of subcommittees, because point in fact, it's actually a full city council meeting, so every council member, council member has the opportunity to participate where the public does not, and, um, that also becomes problematic for me. It's one of these things, clearly we're going to have to suss out when we have this rules discussion, but it's one that we have trended towards in the last six years, simply because the Attorney General's Office really could not provide a clear answer, and Northampton is the only community that does this as far as I know. We're the only one that does it simply because we wanted so very badly to make sure that we abided by the letter and the spirit of the law of open meeting, but it wasn't meant or designed to be essentially a de facto council meeting every single time.
Um, and I'll just note the one exception, you know, is that we finance convenes during the council meeting, and everyone participates, and Counselor Dwight, maybe very briefly, do you want to tell us the history of that, how that came to be, very briefly?
Well, actually it occurred before my time, but point in fact, actually, it was a, a that, that was kind of a holdover from, from, even from the old charter, and, um, it it just simply, and actually Finance Committee was originally scheduled to meet twice a month. Uh, uh, I'm not twice a month, it had actually a separate meeting that was not under the full council.
Once a month.
That could be, yeah, and the, um, but it, it became essentially, given the fact that most of our discussions are financial orders and discussions, and there's also time sensitivity related to it, that it made more sense to have it contained within the meeting. Again, that's something we do that no other council does to my knowledge, that it's, it's kind of weird, we convene, go into recess, and convene another meeting, then come out and do that, but, um, you know, it's cute, it works.
That brief explanation, um, Counselor Maori, I feel like I saw your hand. That you disappeared briefly, okay, I'm going to go to Counselor Jarrett.
Um, so, if, I mean, there's a, there's a level of efficiency to combining some of this, in terms of, in, between the Committee on Legislative Matters and the Committee on Community Resources, there's, I believe, just two counselors that aren't on those, uh, Counselor Quinlan and Counselor La Barge. So, if, if there is a desire to all, to include the Planning Board in that, for Community Resources, then, uh, it seems that, I, I would like to hear, uh, if, if, uh, how the council would feel about doing a joint meeting of the full council and the Planning Board, immediately followed by the committee meeting on Legislative Matters. And I, I don't know if that, in order to really talk about that, perhaps we need to do a new motion?
Uh, perhaps, but if we're, technically, if we're convened as the full council, then the presiding officer would be the council president. So I would defer to the council president on that, because the Legislative Matters Chair is only the Chair of Legislative Matters. And I would not be able to conduct a hearing as the Chair of Legislative Matters, that would, if we're met as the full council. Just to be clear.
You, am I supposed to answer a question now, which is, okay, um, Counselor La Barge?
I thought I heard Counselor Jarrett mention my name and Counselor Quinlan, I couldn't hear what that was about.
Counselor Jarrett, you want to reiterate?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you two are the ones who are not on Legislative Matters or Community Resources. So, holding a full council meeting, you know, obviously you could choose not to come, but, um, that would include you in, in that joint Planning Board meeting, um, while otherwise, you would not be included.
Oh, okay, so where are we now? Do we, someone remind me what motion is on the floor?
We have Counselor Dwight's motion on the floor, I believe, to, uh, refer to Legislative Matters.
To refer as a hearing, a joint hearing of the counts, of the Legislative Matters and of the and the, uh, Planning Board, and then there's also added to that, a motion to refer to Community Resources. As it stands.
Okay, so, um, and you, unless you want to, um, what's the word, retract, how do you take a motion away, I'm very tired of people?
You can withdraw a motion.
Thank you, that's the word, unless you want to withdraw, I assume you don't want to withdraw your motion, and
I'm willing to, I'm willing to submit it to a vote and see if it fails.
Okay, are you willing to amend it to have it also go to Community Resources, is that where we are?
That's fine.
So, right now the motion is joint hearing Legislative Matters and Planning, and then, um, or no, first Community Resources.
Yeah.
And then a joint hearing with Legislative Matters and Planning, uh, Counselor Jarrett?
Um, since we're going to vote on this, uh, I would also ask if, uh, so I spoke with the tree warden, and, um, he would like this to also be referred to the Urban Forestry Commission. Um, so if Counselor Dwight is amenable to adding that, uh, I would bundle that in, so I wouldn't have to make another one after, in case this passes.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. All right, no further discussion, um, let, uh, Counselor Maori? Okay, Counselor Maori, then Counselor Foster.
I can't hear her.
He's not saying anything yet.
She's muted, she's acting.
Oh, she, I bet she came out of the meeting and now she can unmute, okay, there you go. We figured.
All right, I just wanted to say that I missed ninety percent of that conversation because my internet went out, so I, uh, just, just, when you when you make a motion, just say the, the whole part of it, because I didn't really hear anything to happen.
Okay, um, so to reiterate, the motion right now is to, uh, move these, to refer these to, um, to, okay, I got it, I got it. To Community Resources and to, um, to
Matters to hold the joint hearing.
I need, I need the trees.
Forestry.
Forestry, um, and then a joint hearing with planning and Legislative Matters.
Okay.
Well, that's what we usually do, right?
That's what we usually, yes, with the addition of, so Community Resources and then, and Forestry to both those. And then a joint hearing with planning and Legislative Matters.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Foster, then Counselor Jarrett. Oh, you're muted, Counsel Foster.
Don't worry, it wasn't very profound, um, so, so I'm just seeking clarification, so with this motion, it's going to go to Community Resources, Urban Forestry, and then, and when it goes to Legislative Matters and Planning Board, then it would fall under Counselor Dwight's, um, preferred method of hosting the Legislative Matters public hearing, which would mean that other counselors could participate as members of the public, but not as not along with the committee. Am I correct?
Yes. That's correct. Uh, Counselor Jarrett?
Uh, and if it fails, um, that, that there, I think, we will, Counselor Nash and I perhaps will be, um, putting forward to meet as the full council for the public hearing. And, and not ha, not go to Community, Community Resources.
Though still Urban Forestry.
Yes.
Okay.
I anticipate something like that happening, if that happens.
All right, let's not keep us in suspense.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
No.
Counselor Jarrett?
No.
Counselor La Barge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
And Counselor Nash?
No.
Think by my blurry counting.
Susan right there with her calculator, no.
Okay, so those move, uh, they've been referred to Urban Forestry, Community Resources, and then a joint hearing between Planning and Legislative Matters.
Sounds good.
Okey dokey. Uh, we did the ordinances?
Counselor Dwight has his hand up.
Yeah, I, it, the, you remember, I, I have a scheduling issue here with, uh, with Legislative Matters and the Planning Board, so given the fact that is, I don't know when Urban Forestry meets, do we know?
Can we find out?
Counsel, Counselor Jarrett seems to know.
They meet twice a month on Wed- on Wednesday, I forget if it's the first and the third, or the second and the fourth, but it seems like they would certainly meet before you were talking about scheduling the public hearing.
Yeah, it's first and third.
And, yeah, and the, the Planning Board And, yeah, and the, the Planning Board usually has a meeting on the twenty-seventh, but there won't be because it's vacation week. Because the kids have been stuck in school for so long, they need a break. And so, um, so the, uh, we wouldn't be able to have a joint meeting until sometime in May. And I, as I said, I listed those dates and now can't, I can't find it. Laura, do you have those dates that are available?
Yes, it would be either Mon- Monday, May tenth, or, um, either Thursday, May thirteenth, or Thursday, May twenty-seventh are the options.
Uh, are there any preferences among the members, Counselor Thorpe, Counselor Sharon, Counselor Maori?
So Monday, May tenth is our usual meeting, yes.
Right.
And, um, which works for me. I was going to be there anyway. Um, I don't know if anyone have any other thoughts?
That's what I would prefer as well. I mean, I can, I can make any of those dates.
I'm good with May ten.
Okay.
Let's do it then. So we'll, we'll tentatively schedule, but of course, pending the agreement of the Planning Board, but for May, that hearing will be on May tenth. This, the reason we have to identify it is because eventually Laura has to advertise it, so. Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so I was just about to say that I, unless I skip something, I think we're done.
Move to adjourn, please. Second.
Nice, seconded by Counselor Barge, by a whole host of people. Okay, roll call on adjourning, Laura.
Counselor Shara.
Yes, yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
And Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Laura, you came close. You came close. You really did. You called it, and I was, that's impressive.
All right, good work, everybody. We did it.
Bye.
Good night.